Hi, and welcome to this meeting of the Washington County Public Schools Board of Education. I want to remind everybody that if indeed you want to submit comments to us, you can do it in writing to boe@wcps.k-12.mdd.us. It's the same suffix. And those comments will be fielded by us so that we can give you personalized attention. And as we begin, I'd like to call this meeting to an order. We do have a quorum, even though we have one member absent. And I would love for us to stand and say the pledge to the Pledge of Allegiance with Carter Ladak.
The allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence. And a little prayer, Lord, you said it, we lack wisdom, and give it to us, and so we're asking for you to do so. In this meeting. Please be seated. Carter, we're just absolutely thrilled that you are here with us today. And I know that you have some guests with you. Would you like to introduce them to us?
Yeah, so right here, closest to me is my dad, and then you have my mom, and then over there is my sister, and then right here we have my principal, and then my little sister.
Aw, well, welcome to you as well. Now, I've heard that you're an avid writer.
I like writing, yeah.
Now, you're supposed to be really enthusiastic. I was an English teacher, so writing is really very, very good. What do you like to write?
Um, I like writing, like, short stories.
Hmm, that's good. And who is Mrs. Leatherman?
My teacher.
And she likes your stories, too?
Yes.
So, you love watching football and baseball?
Yeah.
Who's your favorite teams?
Uh, the Brewers and Packers.
I don't see anybody back there disagreeing with you. We really appreciate you being here with us tonight. Do you have anything that you might want to add about you, your school, what you like?
Um, not really.
Good, too. Does anybody else have anything they want to ask or say?
Just won the best dressed for today, too.
Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. We appreciate you and your family and your principal. Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Nice job with the pledge, too. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor? Ah, unanimous with the student concurring. Now, we have a whole slew of minutes, so be patient with us. Approval of the minutes?
I make a motion to approve of work session minutes dated January 7, 2025.
Second? All those in favor? Charlie?
I'm so used to saying something.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Unanimous approval, Deb.
Sorry. I make a motion to approve for the approval of closed session open portion minutes dated January 7, 2025.
All in favor? Were you here, Daphne?
No.
Okay, and one abstention. Thank you.
I make a motion for the approval of closed session minutes dated January 7, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I make a motion for the approval of work session minutes dated January 8, 2025.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous, student concurs.
I make a motion for the approval of work session minutes dated January 15, 2025.
Second.
Those in favor?
That was absent.
One abstention, student concurs.
I make a motion for the approval of closed session open portion minutes dated January 21, 2025.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Unanimous.
I make a motion for the approval of closed session minutes dated January 21, 2025.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
I make a motion for the approval of business meeting minutes dated January 21, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, student concurs.
Last one. I make a motion for the approval of work session minutes dated January 28, 2025.
All those in favor? I heard you. Student concurs. Did I approve the agenda? Okay, so let's move into old business.
Second reading of proposed changes to policy BEDD, Rules of Order for Meetings, and Exhibit BEDDE, Rules of Order for Meetings. The Board of Education approved the first reading of proposed changes to policy BEDD and Exhibit BEDDR at its January 21, 2025, public business meeting. The Policy Committee posted a notice on board docs and the school systems website following the approval, seeking comments from the public on the proposed changes. No comments were received. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy BEDD and Exhibit BEDDE.
Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy BEDD, entitled Rules of Order for Meetings, Regular Business Sessions, and Exhibit BEDDE, entitled Rules of Order for Meetings, Regular Session.
Second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing that, we'll move into the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed, student concurs.
Second reading to rescind policy DC, Tax and Debit Limitations, Debt Limitations. The Board of Education approved the first reading to rescind policy DC at its January 21, 2025, public business meeting. The Policy Committee posted a notice on board docs and the school systems website following the approval, seeking comments from the public on the proposed rescission. No comments were received. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading to rescind policy DC.
Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer, I move to approve the second reading to rescind policy DC, titled Tax and Debt Limitations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, student concurs.
Second reading of proposed changes to policy DFAA, Fund Balance. The Board of Education approved the first reading of proposed changes to policy DFAA at its public business meeting on January 21, 2025. The Policy Committee posted a notice on board docs and the school systems website following the approval, seeking comments. No comments were received. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy DFAA.
Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer?
President Zentmeyer, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy DFAA, entitled Fund Balance.
Second. Sorry.
Thank you, Charlie. Do I have any discussion? Seeing that, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? One opposed. One opposed, student concurs.
Second reading of proposed changes to policy DJ, Purchasing Standards. The Board of Education approved the first reading of proposed changes to policy DJ at its January 21, 2025, public business meeting. The Policy Committee posted a notice on board docs and the school systems website following the approval, seeking feedback. No comments were received. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy DJ.
I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy DJ, entitled Purchasing Standards.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Do we have any discussion? Seeing that, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Opposed?
Okay. Second reading of proposed changes to policy KDBA, Procedures Governing the Response to Subpoena or Subpoena Deuces Takeem. The Board of Education approved the first reading of proposed changes to policy KDBA at its January 21, 2025, public business meeting. The committee then posted a notice on board doc and board docs and the school systems website, seeking public comment. No comments were received. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy KDBA.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy KDBA, entitled Procedures Governing the Response to a Subpoena or Subpoena Deuces Takeem? Is it close enough?
Do I have a second?
Second. Thank you, Ashley.
Do we have any discussion?
I have some questions.
Could you explain this a little bit to us in layman's terms?
Which part? So, I mean, broadly, when a school system receives, so this would be, most commonly where we see it, is there's a private civil action between individuals, and there's a request for student records. And it's either to compel a staff member to come testify or a copy of the student records. So, a subpoena deuces take them means the documents. They want you to come with the documents, not so much the person. And so, this cleans up a lot, moving most of it into regulation, but also allows for us to charge a fee for the cost of production of materials, when you have to comply with the requirements, what the requirements are. Is there?
That's it. You've covered it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing that, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, student concurs. Thank you. New business, Dr. Willow. The approval of the 2526 Middle School Program of Studies.
Good evening, Dr. Zentmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Savine. I'm here this evening to ask for your approval of the 2526 Middle School Program of Studies. These changes were discussed at our January 7 work session.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Meyer, I move to approve the 202526 Middle School Program of Studies.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Dr. Willow, it's all what a fine, always, it's what a fine document. Thank you for all the work you and your team put together.
Thank you, but it really is a team effort. I want to also take a moment to thank our communications team that really helped make this, I think, a much better product for our parents to understand, especially the impact of how middle school feeds into high school. So, thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, student concurs. Thank you, Dr. Willow. Mr. Prue, Naming Rights for Barbara Ingram.
Good afternoon, Dr. Zentmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Savine. The matter in front of you is approval of certain naming rights related to the Brick Paver Program that the board entered into with the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation.
Do I have a motion?
President, move to approve the naming rights received and committed by the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation Brick Paver Program.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions, discussions? Seeing that, we'll move into the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, student concurs.
You're stuck with me, unfortunately.
Okay, you're right. Budget adjustments, you're on.
So, this next matter is budget adjustments for fiscal year 2025. As you know, any adjustments that move across the major state aid categories or expense categories, as identified by the Maryland State Department of Education, have to be reviewed by the Board of Education for approval. The matter before you was reviewed at the Finance Committee meeting just a few weeks back, and pending this board's approval, these transactions also have to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Sissler is here with me as well, if you have specific questions about any of the adjustments.
I'll make the motion and then come to the questions. Do you, do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer, I move to approve the proposed FY 2025 budget adjustments as presented.
Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Now, does anybody have any questions, discussions? None? Woo-hoo, okay. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Oppo, well, we don't, it's unanimous, student concurs. And I think, Mr. Prue, you stay one more time?
One more time. My, as you can see, my team grows every time I move to another agenda item. So, the matter here in front of you is the board's adoption of the superintendent's recommended fiscal year 2026 budget as the Board of Education's FY 2026 draft budget. This is the next stage in the budget development process. The board then, if they approve this tonight, will take ownership. The staff, Mr. Sissler and I, will engage the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee, which is one of your advisory committees, to review the budget over the next several weeks. The board then will then have a public hearing on this budget during their business meeting on March 18th, and then tentative adoption of this as your final fiscal year budget would be in the month of April, at your business meeting in April. Happy to answer any questions you have on the document in front of you or the process itself.
Do I have a motion?
President Meyer, I motion to adopt a superintendent's FY 2026 recommended general bu, excuse me, general fund budget as the Board of Education's fiscal year 2026 draft general fund budget.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I want to say, I am voting against this budget because it removes the Supervisor of Equity and Excellence position. Not to save money, but I think it's making a political statement, and let's be honest about why this is happening. It's not about efficiency, it's not about the budget constraints, it's about the opposition to diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. The law is clear, every school system in Maryland must have someone responsible for overseeing equity initiatives. Until now, that responsibility belonged to a full-time position. This budget eliminates that role, not because the work is done, but because, excuse me, some on this board simply don't believe in it. We are now asking staff already working full-time to absorb these duties. What will they give up to make room for this? Won't, what won't get done because of this decision? And most importantly, who will be held accountable when equity work falls by the wayside? This move doesn't make our schools stronger, it doesn't make them more effective, it just weakens our commitment to fairness and inclusion, and it does so deliberately. I refuse to support a budget that prioritizes ideology over compliance with the law and the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that that comment essentially speaks for me, which is not at all what I say, and for me, it is 100% about efficiency, so I strongly disagree with that, that previous comment there, and, you know, this is a position that does not directly involve students. We have other capacities amongst other positions to be able to go and perform these duties. We have policies and laws in place that ensure that we are making sure that every student has an opportunity for success, and there is no doubt that that will continue to happen in the absence of this position. With that being said, I'm probably going to vote to approve this, but there's going to have to be a lot of adjustments before I can approve a final document. You know, we have a lot of spending needs, but in my opinion, this board has also frivolously spent money over the past four years since I've been on the board. You know, we have, I see a bunch of representatives from here, here from Boonsboro, who I'm sure I can guess what they're going to talk about. I think we need to start adding, having a PPP fund, a public-private partnership fund for every, for every school. And if the budget there is maybe for $50,000 a year, we go and add that to each school so that they could go and have money to upgrade their facilities. Maybe it's not going to be enough to get things done right now, but in the long run, I think that would be beneficial for every school. Every school has their own separate needs, and other schools may not have the ability to raise funds that other schools do. So, I think we need to look at making some adjustments to make sure that we can, make sure that there are facility improvements, at least amongst our, speaking specifically about, about our athletic facilities. We have a lot of aging facilities in, on our athletic fields. Also, we are woefully underfunded according to what our policy says for the fund balance. You know, we, we need to start to work to get back towards that. So, I think we need to start making very specific budget cuts so that we can go back and make sure we have an adequate rainy day fund, because I don't see any need for a rainy day fund now, but if we don't get back up to that policy and keep pace with inflation the way that our, our budget has, we're going to be setting up future boards for failure. So, we need to get back to doing that, and I also would like to see us get back to funding more of the OPEB liability. That was something that this board just about completely cut out from this year's budget. So, those will be the changes that I'll be looking to make.
Something, Mr. Evans, I would disagree with you on the point that diversity, equity, and inclusion doesn't directly impact our students because our school system is diverse, and it requires inclusion and equity for all. I think that having a coordinator like this is imperative to ensure that every single student is set up for success, and it's not a guarantee that we will have these laws in place, seeing as the current federal administration has cut DEI within various organizations across the nation. So, I think that this is something that is under attack right now, and we should not take it lightly.
Dr. Savine, you want to add anything?
I would just say that I, too, will be voting for this, but I am hoping to, to see where we can do better by our frontline workers. I've said all along that our frontline workers are, I'd rather see money spent on boots on the ground, not pants in a seat. And so, I think it's important that we take care of our teachers, our school bus drivers, our workers that work in the food area, our, our janitors, that we really take care of those people. They are the ones who are in direct contact with the students. As far as the DEI position, I think that we do have policies in place, and every principal, every teacher, and every other student should be holding themselves responsible to, to hold themselves and others accountable, to treat everybody fairly and equally and respectfully.
Anyone else? Then we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of the Board of Education's FY 26 draft budget? Five, four, opposed? One against.
A lot of vote on the budget.
The motion passes. Which brings us to...
Good evening, afternoon, President Zentmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Savine. Tonight I have seven, seven, four items for review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer, I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements as presented in the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you, Ashley. Discussion?
Mr. Baker, I just have a few questions.
Sure.
Could you talk to me about the roof replacement at North High?
Specifically, so...
How, is it completely new roof? And how long?
Yeah, it was 1992 it was installed, which happens to be the year I graduated from high school, which makes me feel old. And, but it is a complete roof replacement.
And, and what are we paying for that?
Uh, that came in at $3,082,752.
And the funding source is from?
Local and state CIP.
Okay. And then we're renewing our service provider with Antietam broadband?
Correct.
And it's just monthly unit rates listed, so do we know what that's?
In FY 24, we spent approximately $118,750. We put that in because sometimes there is, there might be a need to increase or potentially even decrease the, the amount of service we get, and so we, we didn't want to lock ourselves into one particular band and then have that not be sufficient to provide the service.
And the school nursing services, I noticed that you had a lot of, a lot of bids, and that you went with this one, American Medical Staffing. Have we ever used them before?
We do currently use them for some of our special ed, like OTs, PTs, when we need additional staff. This is one of the companies that does provide those to us. They've also, I think, provided us nursing staff in, in the past. I don't think they currently do, but they currently provide us some staff on the special ed side.
And the cost for that?
Uh, that's a three-year, approximately $15,967,350.
Which comes from the general fund.
Correct.
And we're renewing whiteboards, because every school has whiteboards, for sure.
Right, so a few years back, we moved the whiteboard purchases to our maintenance and operations side of the house, so they purchase the boards for the schools, make sure they get hung correctly. So, we, it's, can be an actual board itself, or we also buy some overlayments, so if it's, let's say, an old chalkboard that they can turn into a whiteboard. And there's a variety of sizes on there. Most of the sizes, we purchase our standard sizes, but we, you know, just put a variety of sizes... sizes, but we, you know, just put a, a variety of sizes in case there was a need ever for a, an odd size or a bigger size for a, uh, specific, um, uh, meeting room or something to that effect.
I just, I thought it was good for transparency to let people know what we're, what was on the agenda, what we're buying, what we're spending. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other discussion, questions? We'll move to the vote. Agenda as presented, those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
First reading of proposed policy ACF animals in schools. The policy committee reviewed proposed policy ACF at its public work sessions on October 31st, 2024, and January 8th, 2025, at the request of staff, because the Board of Education currently does not have a policy regarding the presence of non-service animals in schools, so this would be a new policy. Staff recommended, and the policy committee agreed, that due to the increasing number of requests to allow animals in schools, the Board of Education should adopt a policy that permits certain animals on board property under certain circumstances. The proposed policy does not govern service animals, and that is, as that is governed under a separate board policy. It should also be noted that the proposed policy prohibits therapy animals and emotional support animals, which are not defined as service animals under federal law. The policy committee is recommending the Board of Education approve the first reading of proposed policy ACF.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer moved to approve the first reading of proposed policy ACF entitled Animals in Schools.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Linda. Um, any discussion? Seeing now we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Which brings us to personnel action. Oh, we have another one?
Committee appointments.
Sorry.
Committee appointments.
This is a Board of Education Advisory Committee appointment. I ask that the board approve the candidate for the advisory committee as discussed in closed session.
A very important one, sorry, didn't mean to just almost skip over it. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve proposed candidates for membership on one of the Board of Education Advisory Committees.
Do I have a second? Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now personnel actions.
Good evening, President Zentmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Savine. As discussed earlier during closed session, there are several staff changes for your review, and at this time, I ask for your approval of this evening's personnel actions.
Thank you, do I have a motion?
President Zentmeyer, I move to approve the personnel actions dated Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, as presented in closed session.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Tori?
Yes, second.
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Four, two. The motion carries. Mr. Edwards, what do you have for us on the legislative session?
Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Savine, members of the board, I'm gonna provide you with a brief update this evening with regard to what's been happening in Annapolis. 2025 legislative session is well underway, uh, more than 2,500 bills have been introduced, they're busy doing a lot of things, and approximately 20% of those, or about 500, uh, have to do with education in some form. For those of you who are new to the board, I wanted to just quickly, uh, share kind of what our process is with regard to the team involving staff, as well as the representatives of the board who serve on the legislative response team. We are monitoring the bills, um, determining the possible impacts on the school district, and constantly comparing bills and what they're going to do with your legislative priorities, and then making the determination as to which ones we need to, uh, come forth to the LRT, uh, the board members that serve on that, and say, here's some draft, uh, testimony and so forth that we, uh, may provide, and so we get that, and we, we represent you. I think that's most important for the community to understand. Wanted to cover, uh, bills of interest, and in particular note those for which we have already submitted some testimony, but first, obviously, uh, perhaps the biggest issue that's, uh, being discussed as part of this legislative session is the state's budget. I think we're all keenly aware of the fiscal challenges of the state, uh, the bills that are listed here on the slide are those that have to do with the state's budget. Um, as you all know, the governor's budget proposed cuts to help address the shortfall, it delays implementation of certain aspects of the blueprint of Maryland's future, and that certainly has an impact on us here in Washington County Public Schools, and, uh, perhaps the one positive, uh, out of that budget is that it does include about $6 million, just under $6 million for the construction of Downsfield Pike Elementary School. The other big thing, and I just mentioned it, is the proposed adjustments to, uh, the blueprint, um, and there are two bills that cover that, um, House Bill 504 and Senate Bill 429, uh, this is, uh, lovingly known as the Governor's Bill, this is the Governor's proposal for how to amend the blueprint for Maryland's future. It alters funding formulas, uh, and, by making a variety of changes, uh, that could impact, uh, funding. It freezes certain increases in concentration of poverty school grant program, again, to save the state money, uh, in the short term, and then it also alters some of the sources. In terms of advocacy efforts with regard to these changes, um, they focus really on three main things. One is to try to preserve the foundation money, not to cut too deeply with regard to that, because of the impact that that would have on local governments in trying to perhaps make up that loss of state funds. Not including any new mandates, particularly unfunded mandates, I think that, uh, makes perfect sense, and then to provide increased, uh, flexibility with regard to funding, in particular the COP or concentration of poverty funding. Tomorrow's a big day with regard to this bill, um, it is, hearings are scheduled on this, we anticipate the governor will be presenting, uh, his rationale behind this. I do know that the superintendents across the state have been discussing this, and they're supportive, but with some changes, and Pazam has, uh, put together an all-star cast, for lack of a better term, to participate in that hearing tomorrow, um, so we'll certainly be, uh, attuned to that and seeing what comes of that. The other bill, um, that I wanted to mention, or set of bills, House Bill 1245 and Senate Bill 852, also includes alterations, uh, to the blueprint. Um, you can see there on the slide, the, the three main points, uh, included in this bill, repealing the career counseling program, again, a cost-saving effort, altering some of the reporting requirements mandated by, by the blueprint, uh, for example, requiring county boards of education to report on a s, per-school funding, uh, for certain programs associated with the blueprint, that's, uh, change or alteration is included in this. And then one that, uh, is, we're supportive of because of the additional flexibility would be to provide a waiver for minimum funding per school requirements, uh, for schools with 350 or fewer students. That increased, uh, flexibility is something that I know this board has been supportive of in the past. The hearings with regard to this particular bill, or set of bills, um, are set, uh, within the next week or so, the, for the House bill, it's not been set yet, March 5th is the date of the hearing for the Senate bill here, so again, we'll be closely monitoring and watching those bills. One area that I know is a priority for the board is school safety and security, so I wanted to touch on House Bill 157 and its cross-filed bill, Senate Bill 136, this has to do with the Safe Schools Fund, and, uh, currently, uh, there's an annual appropriation the state makes of $10 million for the Safe Schools Fund grants to be distributed to school districts across the state. Not all of those funds are spent, and so this bill would provide flexibility and allow districts that fully expend their allocation to submit a request for some of the unspent funds to address needs that they demonstrate within that same fiscal year. So we submitted, um, testimony in favor of this, uh, the hearings were held late last month, and this, these bills are still in committee at the present time. Also, with regard to safety and security, um, there are a number of bills related to juvenile sex offenders, the juvenile sex offender registry and reportable offenses, so I wanted to touch on just a couple of those to help provide you with a little bit of an understanding of this issue. Um, state law currently prohibits students who are on the juvenile sex offender registry from attending school in person. Other educational opportunities are provided to those, uh, individuals other than public school or in-person attendance. Um, however, there's not really a mechanism in place currently of notifying schools when students are on that juvenile sex offender registry. So this bill would, um, try to close that, uh, oversight or loophole, if you will, and require law enforcement and state's attorneys to notify school districts when a child is arrested for certain offenses and appear on that, uh, ultimately appear on that juvenile sex offender registry. It also expands the offenses for which students could be prohibited from in-person attendance. We submitted, um, written testimony in support of this bill, in addition to that testimony that we submitted to the committee, we sent a copy of that directly to Senator McKay, as Senator McKay serves on the Judicial Proceedings Committee, and, uh, this remains in committee, although the hearings were held, uh, toward the end of January. Another bill that I wanted to, um, make mention of is, uh, Senate Bill, I'm sorry, House Bill 773, and House Bill, uh, Senate Bill 482 and House Bill 773, it's known as the Right to Teach Act. Um, this bill is of interest to this board because it, it works to, um, provide for a safe and secure learning environment in schools, and specifically would, um, help to address disruptions in the learning environment. Senator Quarterman, as well as delegates Valentine, Wyville, and Baker are, are all co-sponsors of this particular piece of legislation. I will note that a similar bill was introduced and defeated five years ago in 2020, um, but we're, we're monitoring this bill at the present time. While certainly supportive of enhancing safety and security in schools and dealing with disruptive students, I know this board is committed to local control as well, and this bill's very prescriptive with regard to what, uh, occurs when a teacher, the middle school or high school level would remove a student, the disciplinary, um, sanctions that could be imposed by the administration or guidance counselor at the school level, and so we're just simply monitoring it this, at this time, because local control, we feel, and I know this board feels, is that that is an, an issue that's best addressed at the local level. So we'll certainly keep an eye on this bill, um, there's a hearing coming up, uh, next week on the Senate bill, and in early March on the House bill, so we'll keep apprised of that. Good old student cell phones, just when you thought it was gone, uh, it's back. Um, there are no fewer than seven bills with regard to prohibiting or limiting student cellphone use at school, and there are two, uh, they all have some subtle similarities, but at the end of the day, it's about students focusing and paying attention to the instruction versus paying attention to their phones. The issue has received a great deal of attention, a majority of the bills that have been introduced, and they're noted there on the slide, simply require local boards to develop and implement a policy prohibiting students from utilizing cellular device during instructional time, except for certain limited uses, like if they have health monitoring, um, needs, there's an IEP that requires them to have an electronic device, things along those lines. Senate Bill 29, uh, to the contrary, would establish a pilot program where such limitations or policies would be implemented in Montgomery and Carroll counties, and then after a year of that being in place, those counties would report back and, and state how they were shared. So, uh, I'm sure you all are aware, but for the publics, uh, currently, uh, Washington County Public Schools already has a policy in place that student, uh, personally-owned electronic devices are not allowed during instructional time, um, and they have to be turned off and kept out of sight, so if something were to get passed that would require a, a policy, I think you're in good shape, again, the devil's in the details, we would have to see, but we are closely monitoring, uh, these bills as well. The final bill I wanted to mention is one that you don't need to worry about, but because we submitted testimony, I felt it was important to, to keep the board apprised of it. Um, it's Senate Bill 98, it has since been withdrawn, uh, by the sponsor, it was sponsored by Senator, uh, Louis Young over in Frederick County, and it would have put into state code, uh, certain specifics, uh, with regard to how the student representative to this board is selected, uh, what they receive for serving, i.e. a scholarship, uh, and that their expenses would be reimbursed, their expenses for fulfilling their duties. Uh, we were unaware of this legislation, no one had reached out to us with regard to that, so we worked with the LRT and we submitted, uh, written testimony, simply asking that the bill be amended to remove Washington County, and subsequent to us, uh, putting forth that testimony, the sponsor withdrew the bill in whole, so again, you don't need to worry about that one. Wanted to remind you that, uh, per your policy, we'll be providing monthly updates through the end of the session, April 7th is that date scheduled as of this time, so I'll see you again in mid-March, see you again the day after Tax Day, that's a friendly reminder embedded in there, and with that, if you have any questions, I'll entertain them.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. So, um, for HB 1245, SB 852, when we talk about providing a waiver for minimum funding per school requirement, does that mean that if the per-pupil funding equals like, a million dollars, that you wanna be able to only allot 750,000? Like, what, I don't know what that means exactly, can you explain a little bit more about what you wanna?
Nope, I, I'll be honest, I don't know if I can get some help from my colleagues, that, that one, the detail of that is a little over my head, I don't know, Mrs. Ram or Mr. Prue can help me? I'm gonna phone a friend.
I just got the shrug from Mr. Prue, um, so, when finance shrugs, it's never good.
Right.
Right, no, but I, I, big picture, can I, the details, I don't have in front of me, big picture, I can get you more detailed answer later, but big picture and for everyone watching, um, when we say the money falls a student, I believe some of this has to do with, um, there's a minimum spend in some of the schools, and when you have a small, smaller school, that means there's a significant amount more money that has to be spent per pupil than in some of the larger schools, so I think that's, without the details in front of me, that's what this addresses. I can get you more detailed answer and give you a sec, the section of the bill, so you can look at it.
Thank you.
Listen to this, I believe it would be March 18th and April 15th, and my, I just looked at my calendar, because those dates didn't look right to me.
There are regularly scheduled official board meetings in March and April, and if I got the dates wrong, I apologize.
March, you may have been wrong here, March eight, you said 18th?
Yeah, I said...
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, you're right. March 18th is the next business meeting, and then April 15th would be the one in...
Thank you, Derek.
My apologies, I wasn't trying to avoid you.
No problem, I just wanted to make sure I was right.
You passed the test for paying attention.
Thank you.
Um, I had one question as well, it might be a Mr. Prue question, but I don't know. Um, so regarding SB 429 with the cutting of, um, some per pup, uh, per-pupil funding, and also the suspension of some concentration of poverty, um, funds, how will that ultimately affect our county, because I know, um, some smobs from Carroll and, um, also Hartford County, they've been talking to me, and, um, they've been saying how like, these cuts to blueprint and to the budget have significantly decreased, like, the amount of physicians that they have in the county, and, um, that has ultimately led to, or is going to, um, result in increased class sizes, and, uh, just a generally less, uh, an atmosphere that's less conducive to student success.
Before Mr. Prue provides all the, the details, the freezing certain increases in concentration of poverty has to do with the expansion of, so it'll put a limit on the amount of schools, it'll, it'll stop the addition of concentration of poverty schools. Mr. Prue, am I wrong? Oh, I see them, okay.
Yes, maybe. All right, so let's take, let's take one piece at a time, the freeze on concentration of poverty stops the growth in the program in FY26, but not necessarily the entrance of new schools, so in FY26, the concentration of poverty program hits the floor of the free and reduced meal percentage, which I believe is 55%, any school above 55% would enter into the concentration of poverty program. I would conjecture that if a school, if a school's three-year average, uh, let's say in 28 or 29, reached the 55% threshold, they would get in, but then once you get in, your first year is a personnel grant, where there's funding for your concentration of poverty coordinator, and for a minimum, a, uh, an RN in your school health room. Year two, you start entering into a per capita allocation based on the number of students in your building... in your building, and that per capita allocation has several growth steps. Starts at 16% of the total allocation, moves to, I want to say, 29% to 39%, probably about a five or six-year growth period moving in. All schools will stop in 2027 where they were at their 2026 level, and there'll be no growth up through the program. So that is a budgetary savings to the state, because with the exception of a handful of counties, the state is picking up 100%, 100% of the tab for the concentration of poverty program. Secondarily to that, one of the key changes that that bill brings forward is a delay in teacher collaborative planning time until 2030, so a four-year delay in that. That value inside the foundation formula is $153 per pupil, which has then a value to us of approximately $3.5 million, split equally, sorry, not split equally, two-thirds of which comes from the state government, one-third comes from local government. So it's a savings to our local government as well in terms of the allocation they have to provide to WCPS. Additionally to that, the compensatory education funding formula and the multilingual learner funding formula are tied to the foundation rate. So they see just about the same subsequent reduction. That's an additional $2 million that's not coming to the Board of Education in FY '26, split again about the same way between about two-thirds state, one-third county. The, the bill does, the special education allocation is also based on the foundation formula, but this law actually changes the rate for special education and freezes it to what was in the original blueprint bill, so that the special education funding is not affected. Good? A lot of details, but I think, I think hopefully that I didn't get too far in the weeds, which I tend to do.
So in response to these freezes, will the, I guess the program of blueprint, will that be extended? Because I know that blueprint had like its own, like set amount of time that it was supposed to be implemented between.
I think, having read the bill, but it's been a few weeks, I don't think there was an extension added to it, because this, this freeze is still well within the term of the original blueprint bill, but I don't recall.
The answer to that, while it delays some of the implementation, it doesn't overall delay or extend that, that big implementation picture, the final date where they thought it would be implemented by.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion?
Thank you so much.
I'll go first with reports to the board, because I'm so excited about my report. Curriculum and Instruction met at Rockland Woods on February 5th. Oh, my goodness. I'd love to fill you in on everything that we did, but we'd be here until midnight. Suffice it to say that the principal, Scott Wildison, Carly Shaki Coleman, Emily Nicholson, and Casey Dawson make a team that lead an enthusiastic group of teachers. It was so uplifting. As they prepare their 712 students, that includes seven special programs, and seeing these kids succeed as lifelong learners, it's awesome to watch and share with you. We talked about Grow Your Own, which is a Washington County imperative, including our CTE, Teacher Academy, the Reading Tutor Apprentices, both which are fabulous programs. We're launching our students with a blueprint for them to become teachers in their own county, and the most important people on the planet, obviously, as well as adults with American Accelerates Degree Program and the REACH Grant and cohorts for admin. Carly Pumphrey was on hand to help us examine our curriculum resources, and our next meeting is at Lincolnshire Elementary on March 5th at 11:30. Which brings us to finance.
We met on January 28th, and we discussed the physical year 25 budget adjustments, the health insurance fund, and investment activity. And then we scheduled our next meeting for March 25th.
Anything to report at this time? Policy review?
Yeah, we met last week on April snow day, and.
I just loved it. Since I was a kid, I'd wait for those words to come across on handheld phone. Washington County Public Schools are now closed, so imagine my surprise when we had a meeting.
I had a ticker on TV. So you saw the, the discussions we had that we just voted on. In addition to that, we discussed the use of board-owned education, or Board of Ed-owned vehicles. That was something that was particular on my mind after I figured out, after we found out how much we reimbursed in mileage last year at our last budget work session. So that's something that I'd imagine there'll probably be some changes on. We talked about opportunity for public comment at board meetings, and we also talked about the agenda format for board meetings. Oh, and the telehealth policy that will be coming up soon as far as changes to the state law goes. And the next meeting we will have will be on Wednesday, March 5th at 8:30 in the morning.
Which brings us to you, Dr. Savine.
Because that was a big joke on me.
All right. Thank you, President Williams. President Zetmar. It is that time of our agenda where we recognize our students, and I just have one, one report to share with you. It's great to see, I believe our students are in the back here, but we're here to recognize our Boonsborough High School students from We the People team. They are, we're here to, once again, recognize them for earning a, a state title in this competition. This is 10 consecutive years, and in earning that state title competition, they earned the right to move on to the national competition. So I'm going to turn it over to our content specialist of high school and social studies, Mr. Scott Berman, who will share and introduce this year's students and the team from Boonsborough High School, We the People.
Good evening, Dr. Savine and members of the board. Tonight, we would like to recognize students who competed and were victorious at the We the People state competition, held in Annapolis on December 16th, 2024. We the People is a simulated congressional hearing, providing students an opportunity to demonstrate their knowledge and understanding of constitutional principles and ideas. These students will prepare for April's national competition. This is the 10th consecutive year that Boonsborough High School has advanced to the national competition. This evening, we are joined by team members, student coaches, and Ms. Ashley Vasek, the team advisor. I'll read the student names, and they'll come out and receive a certificate. Caleb Athenos. Lauren Hornbaker. Carol Lee McGivney. Zoe Owens. Abby Rankin. Landon Waters. And now the student coaches. Noah Chu. Anna Jackson. Misha Slattery. Abby Smith. Olivia Taylor. Also, members of the team that weren't able to make it, I still want to mention their names. Nate Dickinson, Kyle Matthews, Skylan Menser, and Karis Rikard. And finally, their advisor, Ms. Ashley Vasek. Thank you.
You guys are gonna have to do tippy toes.
I am, using my tippy toes.
Just pull me, pull up on my shoulder. She'll stand up on this chair.
All right, good ones, here in three, ready? One, two, three. And again, one, two, three. Take a look. Gonna take a couple more a little higher. One, two, three. Last one for good measure, one, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Very much.
Thank you very much.
Congrats.
Dr. Savine, do you have anything else?
I do not.
You do not? Okay. Agenda items for our next meeting include, and if you can find it quickly, the school highlights on the role and impact of our school in safety assistance and the strategic plan. If you have something you want to add it to the agenda, please see a member of the Agenda Planning Committee. Which brings us to board member, public comments. Before we begin, let me read from KD, her policy. The next item, public comment, is legislated by policy KD regarding procedures at business meetings. Each person wishing to address the Board of Ed is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters, which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Those wishing to address the board who do not sign up prior to the start of the meeting will be required to sign the log at the speaker's table for the purpose of the minutes of the meeting. Each speaker may speak up to five minutes. A timer will be used for each speaker. Once a speaker begins, the timer starts, and a green light will be displayed. When you have 30 seconds left, you'll get a yellow light, and when the speaker's time has elapsed, a tonal sound, then there'll be a red light, at which time it indicates that the speaker's allotted time has ended. At this time, I'd like to call up my first speaker. Ooh, I need readers for these, huh? Julie Hartman.
Good evening. Do I push this or say? I'm good. Okay. Good evening, and congratulations to the board. My name is Julie Hartman, and I am the co-president of the Boonsborough Athletic Boosters, which supports Boonsborough High School athletes and their coaches to obtain and maintain a high level of athletic competitiveness, spirit, and pride through the moral and financial support. I'm here to ask you to partner with us to bring coaches' dream to reality for our student athletes. We began this journey officially approximately 18 months ago with a plan that was presented to the previous board. The board asked for several changes, which we agreed to, but we are still waiting for the letter of intent and memorandum of understanding to be approved by the WCPS board, so that we can begin to raise money for this project and provide our students with the upgrades they deserve. Our cheerleaders are standing at a drainage ditch to cheer for our football teams. They are unable to see the game from their position, so they stand on boxes, on unlevel, unlevel ground, and attempt to cheer as best as they can without falling. Fans in the stands, their parents, fellow, fellow student body are unable to see them on the sideline as they cheer, and our cheerleaders are not even able to display their talents through the game, except at halftime, when they can perform on the field. It's a disgrace to these young ladies, their coaches, and our community that we have not provided a better and safer place for them to cheer. Despite the conditions our cheerleaders must cheer in during football games, our coaches have built an amazing program and have won countless championships. In addition, our baseball team has to share their field with the stadium field due to the proximity of the two. Name one school on the East Coast that shares a baseball field with its own stadium field. Our baseball field is also used by area of baseball teams, and we know that they have fall teams that they must find other green space in the area to hold their practices and games on. Our school cannot hold a lacrosse game on the same evening as a baseball, softball, or tennis match, because the field is shared. Last year, we had a makeup lacrosse game that started an hour late because our baseball game went into extra innings. In addition, the goalposts that must be moved from the football field to accommodate the spring sports, which is a significant safety concern due to its size and awkwardness. We have been fortunate that no one has been injured seriously from moving it annually. Our baseball team must place their temporary fencing up and down every single day, and our lacrosse teams never are able to practice at the stadium. Baseball practices are often cut short on lacrosse game days. I could continue, but I think you have an idea of what our student athletes have to handle. The stadium field is also used for many events, so therefore, no one practices on that natural grass field, so that it can be used for games. We are asking for the stadium to be turfed so that it can be handled the amount of traffic we currently endure and allow practices to be held there, as well as for our student athletes. Moving the baseball field will take away several practice fields from the campus, so having the stadium field and adding the multipurpose field will allow the teams to have a safe place to practice. Our softball field will get a much-needed upgrade as well. We currently have to rent porta-pots for players and fans and sit in the outfield to announce once we transport all of the equipment, table, chair, and sound equipment from our garage. Having bathrooms available and a press box will complete the softball field. This project will not only help our student athletes, but our band students will also get the benefit from having the stadium revitalized and artificial turf. Currently, the band is unable to host any competitions at our school, because the press box is not, is not at the 50-yard line. They ban practices on grassy fields behind the stadium or on the baseball field, whichever is available. Providing a multi-use option to benefit the arts within our student body can support the band program and growth in numbers, and we are better able to accommodate their needs for space and to compete and lead on a higher level. The potential to expand the marching band program to include hosting competitions could bring. could bring financial success to the booster organization and student body. Lastly, as a volunteer to help fundraise for our students, our boosters do not have a secure and safe location to house our supplies and equipment, and having an ability to do that would be extremely helpful. We just currently partnered with the Washington County Technical High School to help with the trailer that we have, and it's been a successful partnership. Again, I hope the Board can understand our need to see Coach's Dream become reality for our student-athletes and band members. We have a lot of money to raise, so please approve so we can get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Logan Atkinson.
Hello, my name is Logan Atkinson, and I'm a junior and student athlete at Boonsborough High School. I play football and baseball. Two of the fields affected by the proposed updates to our campus. I come from a long line of Boonsborough Warriors from my mom, my grandparents, and even my grandparents, all of them student-athletes as well. So I know that it's been a long time since any of our athletic fields have been updated. As a current athlete at Boonsborough, my perspective on the proposed updates to our campus are centered around the safety of myself and my fellow teammates, as well as the availability of facilities for our community. This past fall, our varsity football team faced Northern Garrett in a playoff game that quickly turned into a safety hazard for both teams. From the start of the game, the field conditions continued to deteriorate due to rain on an already saturated field. I've played football since I was six years old, and those were some of the worst conditions that I've ever played in. By the end of the game, we were frozen and covered in mud to the point that our jersey numbers weren't even visible to our game announcer. It was a miracle that we walked away with minimal injuries that night. In the end, we were fortunate that it was just the end of a game and the conclusion of a terrific season, and not the end of someone's athletic career due to a serious injury. I can't help but think what a difference a turf field would have made for the outcome of the game. As an athlete who grew up in Boonsborough, I've had the opportunity to play youth sports and share practice fields with some of the high school athletes. I know that most youth teams don't get that opportunity today because we're so limited on field space at our complex with our school's teams maxing out that space. I remember watching the high school football players and looking up to them during their practices. Just being on the same campus as the older players helped me stay focused on my future as an athlete, as I dreamed of playing on the high school teams. It's my part of, it's a part of youth sports experience I will never forget and that I hope other athletes get to have as well. By expanding our fields and practice areas to allow the youth of our community to play alongside of us, we give those future Warriors something to look up to and forward to. I know that the proposed updates to the athletic fields most likely won't happen during my time at Boonsborough High School, but I'd love them to be available for my little brother and all of the future Boonsborough Warriors as they continue our legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Lowry.
Good evening. My name is Sue Lowry, and I'm a retired teacher, athletic director, and coach of Boonsborough High School. I'm here to speak again regarding the Coach's Dream Project at Boonsborough High School, which would upgrade the outside athletics fields and correct safety issues, maintenance, and scheduling nightmares. The project was the dream of Coach Dwight Scott, who was and still is an icon in the Boonsborough community. Coach Scott served Boonsborough High School and the community since 1959, when he started his teaching career and was named the first football coach at Boonsborough. Coach Scott actually built the stadium field that we have now by wheelbarrow and shovel. He has been instrumental in serving our community, has been a mentor to thousands, and also spent hours, endless hours, in up and driving force in updating the facilities at Boonsborough High School. He even scheduled a meeting with the then-new principal two weeks prior to his death to go over this project. At Coach Scott's celebration of life, which filled the Boonsborough High School gymnasium and overflowed the auditorium, it was evident of the impact that Coach made in this community. We vowed then that we would take his dream and help it to become reality. So why this renovation? As they stated before me, our field, stadium field, and the baseball field overlap one another by about 30 yards. So this causes major issues now that we, in 2010, started a lacrosse program. We now have to remove the goalposts, which is a daunting task, and we're lucky that nobody has been injured during that process. We also have to then deal with scheduling issues because, again, we cannot play baseball or lacrosse on the same evenings. Our baseball team cannot even practice on their days that they don't have games for a full two-hour practice because of the start of a lacrosse game. Our sports here at Boonsborough High School, when I was tenure, my tenure as athletic director, over 45% of our students at Boonsborough High School are athletes. We fielded out of Washington County the most teams and the most athletes for numerous years. We have, in the fall, two football teams, four soccer teams, and this past fall, we fielded a girls' football, flag football team. In the spring, we have three to four lacrosse teams, and I include two baseball teams because we share the same space. So, as you know, this becomes a maintenance issue. Our field, because of the high impact, has become so compacted that it cannot support grass or even sod. We also know that the best time to grow sod or grass is in the spring or in the fall. Neither of those, which we have time to do because we have athletes on those fields. This is why Frederick County, just two years ago, turfed the last three high school stadiums to meet the needs of the overuse demand. The yearly cost of paint alone is over $10,000 yearly, not to mention the grass seed and sod, fertilizer, and man-hours to maintain a grass field. During my fall and spring, I easily put in over 60 hours a week just to maintain and get our fields playable and ready to go for our athletes. As I mentioned, our field is not wide enough. It meets the bare minimum for soccer and lacrosse. That puts our cheerleaders in the drainage ditch, which, when it rains underneath the bleachers, it comes down the mud, and they're standing in that. So again, it takes man-hours to clean that up. Very fortunate that, yes, we have a maintenance crew that comes in and helps with the mowing. But the problem with that is, is that our field does not drain. The last renovation, they sloped our field so that it goes to the visitor's side and now into the baseball outfield. So it does not drain. So the mowers, when they come, then they either put ruts in the field or they cannot mow or do not mow because of that, and that leaves our grass tall. Or they wait until it dries out, and then that leaves windrows, and we need to go back and clean all that up before we can paint or before we can play. If the fence for the baseball field is put up, then they don't even mow the other 30 yards because of that. So that's just some of the maintenance issues. The other issue is that of scheduling. It becomes, spring is a very short six-week season to begin with. So varsity baseball plays on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. JV plays on Tuesdays and doubleheaders on Saturday.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Colin Telmico.
Hi. My name is Colin Telmico, and I'm coming to you as a representative of a student athlete at Boonsborough High School. I have been a four-year varsity athlete who has played on the field for both football and lacrosse. I am urgently advocating for the approval of a proposed turf field installation and the relocation of an existing baseball field. One of the most significant impacts of this delay is the disadvantage it places on our student-athletes. We have already seen the consequences in our most recent football season, where the team lost a crucial game due to poor field conditions. The severe mud made even practicing on it unsafe for all intensive purposes. These subpar field conditions not only affect our football team, but also severely limits lacrosse practices as we have to practice in a field rather than on our game field. There are no lights on our practice areas. In addition, our lacrosse opponents practice and play every day on turf fields. The pace of play on turf fields versus grass is significantly different, putting us at a disadvantage. Moreover, the current baseball fields create delays in both practices and games due to its location, reducing efficiency and causing unnecessary scheduling conflicts. The overuse of the existing playing field has also led to dangerous conditions that put athletes at the risk of injury. The need for improvement is undeniable as the quality of our fields currently fall below the standards seen at other high schools, putting our athletes at a clear disadvantage. Further, this would open up scheduling opportunities as use of lights around would help timing in late fall and early spring. This would also provide opportunities for our community to use the facilities and build a stronger support network with youth sports. In addition to our on-the-field sports teams, a new turf facility would also improve conditions for cheerleading and marching band. For decades, our cheerleaders have endured cheering our sports teams in a ditch located below the stands. Not only is it dangerous, but unacceptable for our cheerleaders. They work just as hard as all other teams and cheer in better conditions at other area high schools as the reigning county champs. The marching band would also benefit as they would be able to perform on a surface that replicates those they perform on for competition. The relocation of our baseball field and insulation of the turf would help alleviate congestion, improve scheduling, and ensure a safer and more playable field for all sports teams. Our student-athletes deserve to have the same quality of facilities that their peers at other high schools benefit from, ensuring equal opportunities for success and safety. Finally, our fans deserve these benefits, as well as this would open up possibility for more seating at an already overcrowded venue. I urge you to consider the long-term benefits for our student-athletes, coaches, and entire community. By approving the turf field and baseball field relocation, you would be investing in the health, safety, and success of our students. The need is evident, the money is there and waiting with extra in reserve, and the issues have already been resolved. I hope to return to Boonsborough as an alumni and see that our athletes are playing in the conditions they deserve. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Amber Nally. Olivia Gorman. Brooke Miller. And Mia Soto. Coach and cheerleaders.
Hello. Hi, my name's Amber Nally, and I'm the assistant coach to the cheerleading program at Boonsborough. I have been coaching at Boonsborough for the past three and a half years. Additionally, I graduated from Boonsborough in 2016, where I cheered for varsity football for all four years from 2012 to 2015. The conditions are still the same. Before I get into the issues of our program, I would like to present kind of the understanding of the drainage ditch. So you have the stands, at the bottom of the stands is a hill. At the bottom of the hill is the drainage ditch. On the back of the ditch is a stump. Next to the stump is about a foot, two feet of grass, and then the fence. My athletes put their boxes on the grassy area up against the fence, again, for visibility because they cannot see the field from where they stand. They then have to step over the stump into the drainage ditch, and that's where they cheer. Some problems that we have encountered is dirt and mud. So it is a drainage ditch, so dirt and mud drains there. When it's dry, it is dust. It gets in my girls' eyes, mouths, face, sometimes even is blocking visibility of fans to the field. Additionally, is the structure of the drainage ditch. Like I had mentioned, there's a stump. I've had athletes trip and fall. I've had athletes sprain ankles, knees, you name it. I have fallen myself. Additionally, with the mud, it turns into a slip and slide. So even standing on the drainage ditch really isn't safe for my athletes just to do cheer and dances, which is minimal of what they do in the sport. The field itself turns into a slip and slide when it even doesn't rain. So halftime, which is where my athletes can display their majority of the skills that they perform, a lot of times, we can't even perform on the field because it is wet, and that happens even when it doesn't rain. Lastly, our away cheerleaders. I'm not only advocating for my athletes, but for the away cheerleaders as well. There's nowhere for them to cheer. It's kind of embarrassing that for the past two decades, we don't have athletes come to our away section. I think this one past season, we had one team come, and they have to either sit in the stands or they cheer on the sidewalk, which is the public access to the away visitors' stands, which, again, is not safe for them. Overall, as a former D1 athlete, I was not prepared for the D1 game day atmosphere after cheering at Boonsborough. As a coach, I want to give my athletes all the resources and tools available, and I really believe that giving them a safe environment to cheer on where they can display all of their skills would be super beneficial. So I'm going to hand it over to my three captains, and they have a few words that they would like to say as well.
Good evening. Thank you in advance for hearing from us today. My name is Olivia Gorman.
My name is Mia Soto.
And my name is Brooke Miller.
We are the varsity captains of the Boonsborough High School Cheerleading Team.
We have all been heavily affected by the condition of our football field and the surrounding area, specifically the drainage ditch we perform in.
Cheerleading is a physically demanding and precise sport that requires adequate space in order to prevent any chance of injury, something that is very common in cheerleading. Our cheerleading squad is limited to the space inside the football field's drainage ditch due to the design of our stadium. The area hinders both our ability to perform physically demanding stunts and can be dangerous for footing if weather becomes a factor.
As a result of the concrete curb and the fence in the ditch, we are unable to perform elite skills. Not only this, but we can barely dance and cheer due to the uneven ground and curb in between the concrete and grass area.
Safety is always our top priority, and if anyone were to fall backwards out of a stunt, they would risk falling onto the fence and getting seriously injured, which is why we are unable to stunt or tumble during timeouts and quarters, two fundamentals of our sport.
Simply doing cheers or walking through the ditch is dangerous because of the uneven ground and dirt that quickly turns into mud, especially during or after weather has occurred. The slick ground has caused many people to roll ankles and slip and fall onto the concrete.
Last season, we had multiple rain games where we were unable to do basic cheers due to the risk of slipping. The proposed updates to the campus will enhance the game day experience for students and fans. As of right now, the cheerleaders are not visible to all parents and spectators that come to Friday night games. Fixing this area will allow people who come to support us to be actually able to see the cheerleaders.
Another concern is the state of our football field where we perform our halftime show. Because of the football field having no drainage and because it isn't turf, our halftime performance tends to become extremely dangerous. This season, there were multiple games where we could not perform our routine due to the condition of the football field.
Although we know that the proposed updates to our stadium will not be available to us.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Toby Mendez.
I'm not sure if I'm on. Can you hear me okay? Hi, I'm Toby Mendez. I'm not sure if I've had the opportunity to meet any of you in person. I am from Washington County. I grew up here, and I'm an alumnus from Boonsborough High School. A lot of you might know my work. I'm a sculptor. I did the Thurgood Marshall that stands in front of our statehouse in Annapolis. And in the sports field, I've done all the sculptures at Camden Yards for the Baltimore Orioles. In terms of coaches, I've done monuments or tributes to five different coaches. Coach Don Shula, I worked for the Miami Dolphins for their stadium. Earl Weaver, again, for the Baltimore Orioles. Earl Weaver, again for the Baltimore Orioles. Bob Scott for Johns Hopkins University. And Osseo Smith for a community in Dundalk, Maryland, that I'm currently doing now. And one of the things that I learned, working with these coaches in person and also working with the communities, is a good coach ends up becoming a mentor, a father figure, a friend, a brother, an educator, somebody that makes a significant difference in our community. Coach Dwight Scott, I understand that one of the impediments towards our letter of intent may be the sculpture tribute in honor of Coach Scott. And I know, I serve on the board at the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts as a trustee. And often, we make a decision, we vote on something, not having all of the information available. And a good leader will be willing to listen to new information as it sees the light of day, meet with the experts, and find out everything. And a person who changes, who does not change their mind, often finds that they never change anything in life. That's from Winston Churchill. This tribute to Coach Scott will celebrate a mentor that had an effect on a community. If you were at the Boonsboro Gymnasium after he passed, it was filled to capacity. It was, it was like that because Coach Scott looked out for his student athletes. I, I was a student athlete of his back in the late 1970s, and almost 48 years later, Coach Scott heard I was in a park in Frederick and he sought me out because he had been tracking me as, as a student to see where my life was developing. He had that an effect on the community. And this project, in honor of the coach, would be a tribute to all the coaches that followed Coach Scott. If you think about it, he had an effect as a coach for five decades in Boonsboro. And every coach that came after him saw him as a friend and a mentor. This is a celebration and a true tribute to those coaches that have had a positive effect on our community. Some of the pushback, I understand, is that there's a moratorium on coaches, I mean on sculptures or tributes on campus. This one, what makes it different is it's not a memorial, there will be no dates of birth or death. This will be about mentorship, friendship, father, figure, partner, et cetera. It's going to be a catalyst that'll bring the community together, it'll be the catalyst that'll help pay for the coach's dream, which is this fields project. And I encourage you to meet once again, invite me to come in to do a professional presentation and conversation, and open this back up for discussion and vote, so that we can move forward. We need the letter of intent, we need to move forward. This is very important. I encourage you to reach out to me to ask me any questions. The other pushback, I understand, is maintenance. For $15 a year, we could keep it looking brand new. It's going to be made out of bronze, granite, and masonry, things that'll endure the test of time. I work with the city of Frederick, in Frederick County. I teach the employees how to maintain a piece, and with those projects, we put together our trust that goes into the community foundation that'll take care of it in perpetuity. And I encourage that we do that on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Fowler.
Good afternoon, Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Sovine, and members of the board. Appreciate you taking time to listen to all of these folks here today and great job for folks from Boonsboro. I'm, I'm sold. I'm here actually to talk about something different. I'm here representing the Hagerstown Area Religious Council, HARC, and we are a coalition of houses of worship in Washington County, lots of churches, the synagogue, the mosque, and other faith groups as well. We don't all agree on theology, for sure, but we do all agree on serving those in the community who are the least, the lost, and the left out. And we feel that, that equity, it can be seen as a political word, but really, it is about caring for the least, the lost, and the left out, leveling the playing field so that those who are disadvantaged can get the services that they need, get the resources that they need. And you all have shared that you do care about equity, that this is not about throwing equity out the window, that this is about a budget concern, about efficiency, and all of that. But I would say, and in a perfect world, I would love to say that all of our staff and our administrators in, in our schools could, could level that playing field, could make more equitable, and they try, they work very hard to do so, and I know that. But the supervisor of equity and excellence, this one, one position that oversees equity in our schools, is really a resource for these schools, a resource for the administrators and the teachers, helping them to navigate a changing world. Our demographics are changing, you know, we're a much more diverse community. There is not equity in our schools right now. We hear the stories. You, you talked to Dr. Zentmeyer about snow days and loving those, me too. But I just recently heard a story from a teacher who said that several of her students said, please, I hope there are no more snow days because I don't want to be home. Kids are coming from these environments, and we need to be able to address that. But we also need someone who understands the needs of this diverse population, who understands the concerns of those who don't have the same home life that we do, who come from different backgrounds and cultures, to be able to train and support our staff. And this is why we believe that this supervisor and equity and excellence position, or, or some position overseeing the equity work in our schools, is so vital. So I just ask you to reconsider this position, I ask you to consider your personal stance on equity and, and what it means in our schools, and just, and to please help ensure that our children have what they need to succeed, because I think we all want that and we all want a better community. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Les McIntosh.
Dr. Sovine, how are you? Thank you for this time. I'm, I am Les McIntosh, can you hear me? I am Les McIntosh. I am, I wear many hats, I am a part of HARC, Vice President there, I'm a Vice President of the NAACP, I'm a pastor of African-American church, and I also have a Hispanic church that's underneath us as well. But today, I stand as a citizen of Washington County, very concerned. But I stand here disappointed in the recent budget that has been presented that shows the elimination of the equity and excellence position, especially with Allison Smith. But knowing that you all have campaigned, and all campaigned nonpartisan, but seeing the majority of your vote, it seemed you have taken a hard Republican stance that is a national move to remove diversity, equity, and inclusion. But with that stand, I would assume, tell me if I'm wrong, I would assume that your biblical beliefs may be congruent with mine, that will keep my preacher hat on, so I'm going to put my preacher hat on tonight. So to make things simpler, we all believe in the same God. So knowing what I say naturally will not change the course of that vote, but yet going further, I must put on my preacher hat not to convince your course, but rather to compel and to speak to your conscience, and to reconsider your steps and your thoughts going further. Diversity is making policy to ensure a wide range of people that come from different backgrounds, lifestyles, social experiences, races, and religions that are accommodated. I don't know about you, but that sounds like the God we serve speaks diversity. Equity is defined as recognition that we all do not start at the same place, and those imbalances must be addressed. I'm so glad that the God we serve came down to deal with our shortcomings. So with that, that sounds like the God that we serve. I'm so glad that through enough to address our shortcomings, all right, let me go to equity. Policy that supplements or overrides common law to achieve just outcomes, let me say that again. Policies that supplement or override common law to achieve just outcomes. I want to speak of a just outcome right now. I looked over the room and I know perception can become reality, and as we look through this whole crowd, I may be the only African-American in this whole building, and seeing the board, it is not replicated to what is presented in our schools, what has been presented right here that it make it easy for you to make those decisions because we may not seem like we are represented. At a 41%, there should be more. So with the place of overriding these things, I'm glad that the God we serve overridden some things in our life and came down and made things right for us. All right. My phone don't want to work with me, hold on. All right. Inclusion, I'm almost done. The practice of policy of providing equal access to opportunities and resources for people who might otherwise be excluded or marginalized, such as those who have physical or intellectual disabilities and members of minority groups. I'm glad that we have a God that looks and loves all, for God so loves the world, y'all know the verse. So to conclude this, so I know I plan to stand with the organizations I'm a part of, with HARC and NAACP as pastor, and I will use that influence to ensure that whoever and whatever is done with the ex, ex, equity and excellent job duties that you now have spread abroad will be accounted for with policies and with data that not only meets COMAR regulations, but rather ethics, addressing those that are marginalized. And lastly, I believe in policy. And Mr. Burkett, you said something earlier that we hope that the teachers and the bus drivers would do these things. But I'm here to let you know that it's not left to the teachers, the janitors, or the school bus drivers, but policy to govern them, which we have been voted to do so. Thank you for your time. God bless you. Bless your bones.
Did I say that right?
It's Ruth. Ruth.
I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak here, and Dr. Sovine. And I am here, first of all, to tell a story. This past Sunday, I was in Mount Airy, there was a special event. It was a talent show that was sponsored by a group called The Difference, which serves people with special needs, adults with special needs. And what this was, was a talent show presented by the people with special needs. Unbelievable, it was probably one of the most impressive displays of the dignity of every human being that I've ever seen. It was moving. We had people in wheelchairs by themselves trying to do dances, but they were really into it. There were people singing solos and songs. I have never, almost never seen so many smiles, every single performer was like in heaven. They got their claps and, and the people there, parents, friends, supporters, it was amazing. There were some, you know, people that didn't have dry eyes by the end of this. Now, the reason I mention this, because one of the performers was my son, Joseph, who is on the autism spectrum, tie functioning, he sang a song, not in his native language, a solo in Spanish. I was very proud. And the reason I bring this up is because I know there's some threats to these people being included. Fortunately for my son, we were living in Montgomery County when he was in K-12, he spent six to 12, fully included in regular classes. Took some support and some of our own, you know, doing things on my wife and myself's part to get that to happen. And as a result, he got a three-quarters scholarship to college in Westminster at the college. Very proud of him. He also was the number one foreign language student in his high school class. The only student, the professor, or I should say the teacher, high school teacher, told me, whoever got a perfect score in 25 years of his experience on the national Latin exam, who knew there was even one. But he went out of his way to tell me that. Joseph's an adult now, it's hard for him to get a job because of, though I will dare say, he has more knowledge than practically everybody else in this room. Believe me, some people know him, we're here. And I'm really upset by what's going on nationally. There seems to be this attempt to erase DEI, literally. I'm concerned about this county. You know, the famous Project 2025, or Infamous? One of the authors of this is one of our county commissioners. I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the vote taken here earlier, some of the justifications given it. It's not good. And I also am concerned, I happen to be a practicing Christian, very involved and involved in the community and all kinds of volunteer work, and here we are wanting to erase DEI, when if anybody read the gospels, of all people, Jesus reached out to the leper, the blind, the crippled, all of those who were excluded from society, he brought them into inclusion. That's most of the gospel stories, and I'm sorry, but there's a lot of people out there who claim to be Christian, I'm sorry. I hope you do something about it.
Nancy Evans.
Dr. Sovine, Dr. Zentmeyer, and the board. I'll be brief. I would hope that when you eliminate a position, no matter what that position is, that you've carefully looked at the functions that that position performs, and evaluated the effectiveness of those functions. And if they're not effective, then you're justified in eliminating that position. But if they have been effective, and if you still, for budgetary reasons, need to eliminate that position, you need to figure out how those functions are going to be continued elsewhere by other people without overburdening those people. So I'm just here to ask you to carefully consider what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginger Bigelow.
Ginger Bigelow, I live in famous Boonsboro tonight. Good afternoon, Dr. Sovine, President Zentmeyer, and members of the school board. It is my pleasure to speak in support of Coach's vision project. I know other people will be speaking about the need for the project and what the project actually will do for our community, but I would like to speak about the man whose vision it truly was. You would probably have You would probably have a hard time finding a family or a person in the Boonsborough area that does not have a story to tell you about Coach Scott. Coach Scott never met a kid he didn't like. He was a person that could always draw out the best of an individual. Coach Scott devoted his life to the people of Boonsborough. It did not matter the sport or the event, Coach Scott was there. From early, early morning to late, late night, Coach was there. We have three boys who were all directly affected by this amazing man. In fact, they told me that if ever a stand-in was needed for God, it would be Coach Scott. He wasn't just a coach or an athletic director, he was a friend and a mentor. I wanted to make sure you understood how in Boonsborough we feel about his legacy and his vision. He wanted these changes for our kids to help them be more successful on and off the field. Now we're at a point where most of these changes are desperately needed. I've heard it said that you all have not heard from the Boonsborough families. Believe me when I tell you, the Boonsborough people respected and cherished Coach Scott and his vision. I for one know how lucky we were as a community to have someone like Coach Scott to follow. I humbly ask you to consider this project and help us bring this to fruition, not only because we need it, but because we all want his legacy to live on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger.
Now, before you start the timer, I just want you to know I have a six-minute presentation that I'm going to edit on the fly to try to make the five-minute cutoff because I don't have a costume character here with me and I don't plan on shouting any obscenities. So we can start the timer now and I'll fly through this.
Okay.
I'm here today to follow up on my February 2nd email to you where I suggested that a public work session be held as soon as possible to educate county citizens, the county commissioners, and all members of the Board of Education about how the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion are defined and implemented in our school system. My email was prompted by an open letter you received, which was also posted on social media. The writer of that open letter asked about all DEI-paid positions and calls for the suspension, termination, and cancellation of all such paid positions, and most disturbingly, the cancellation of all diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. The writer goes on to encourage the county commissioners to quote, "suspend payments and support to the WCPS unless or until all DEI staffing and programs are terminated." The open letter demonstrates a lack of understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion principles as they exist in public education, as well as indifference to Maryland's public school funding laws. It's concerning that the writer may be seeking a seat on the Washington County Board of Commissioners and may soon fill a vacancy on that board. Nationally, DEI has incorrectly been redefined and turned into a boogeyman, supposedly responsible for most of the ills of society. That's why it's so important that you, this elected board, make it clear to all of us willing to listen what the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion really mean as applied in our Washington County public schools. In BOE policy, GBA, we find that diversity means that we should recognize that people are unique and that supporting awareness, understanding, and respect for individuals, groups, and viewpoints is important. Equity is addressed in policy ADA, and in its simplest form is about improving the learning experiences of every child. Inclusion, as it's defined in policy GBA, simply refers to the practice of welcoming and involving all persons within a group or organization regardless of their individual differences. Even if you read the entire policies, nothing in them seems threatening to me. But of course, those who are raising DEI alarms claim that the devil is in the details. So I urge you to share those details with all of us and answer any questions posed in the open letter publicly in a work session. The sooner the better. Since emailing you, I've heard DEI blamed for everything from the tragic plane crash near Washington DC to the purchase of electric fire engines in Washington State. The writer of the open letter is just one of many county citizens who has been caught up in the current political rhetoric. And as I said, we can all benefit from a factual presentation. COMAR, the Code of Maryland Regulations, requires each school district have an equity policy and that each school district, quote, "designated individual responsible for the facilitation, monitoring, and implementation of the system equity initiatives." You already proposed to eliminate that position in your fiscal year '26 budget. I think your rationale has something to do with saving the cost of one salary or transferring that individual into a classroom. I can only hope that those reasons are truly your motivation. I hope that eliminating the position doesn't mean you plan to eliminate all equity initiatives. I urge you to return that position to your '26 budget. The principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion should be familiar to the four veteran board members. You've already had opportunities to learn about DEI, but I think you'd benefit from a refresher, especially since some of you have been reluctant or unable to participate in similar DEI learning opportunities in the past. Three of you are newly elected to the board and you'll definitely benefit from an opportunity to learn more about the real DEI. An in-depth work session on the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion as understood and practiced in our school system would provide a common understanding of DEI for all of us and maybe help bring our community together, put the DEI boogeyman to rest. And I see I have 44 seconds, so I'm going to quickly jump onto this last part. I want to speak about the change of the meeting time and agenda. Moving the meetings to four o'clock, I think, puts an undue burden on parents who work, on parents who are home trying to get their kids in after school. So I urge you to change that time back. Now, no matter what time you end up having the meeting begin, I would also urge you to put public comment at the beginning of the meeting where it used to be. There's no sense in people coming to the board to comment on items on your agenda that you're going to be voting on if you've already voted on those things before they get a chance to make their public comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Hello, my name is Susan Day and I am a concerned citizen of Washington County. Thank you all for letting me speak in front of you today. I'm here today because I am concerned for the children in the Washington County public school system. My concern centers around the ineffectiveness of this board and its inability to conduct a civilized meeting where real issues concerning our children can be addressed. Certainly, there are rules in place to handle disruptions and irrelevant discussions at this meeting. Yet, these disruptions and topics continue to be tolerated, then spread on the internet, making this board and our school system a laughingstock. The job of this board is to make decisions on issues that are within the legal realm of the Washington County Board of Education. Discussions that are outside of the scope of what you can do should be banned as they are a waste of time and energy. These discussions are overshadowing the purpose of this organization, which is to provide the best possible public education for our children. You cannot control the federally mandated state curriculum, yet we continue to entertain discussions on the topic of curriculum. Persons with a concern over curriculum should be directed to Annapolis. That is where these decisions are made. Get in your car and go there and voice your opinion there. You can say it here, but it is not within our control to change the law. As far as DEI discussions, diversity, equity, and inclusion, it is the law. And therefore, changing its requirement is also outside of the scope of this group in front of me. It is nothing but a political rhetoric that is once again overshadowing the purpose of this organization. Anyone who believes there are individual working, individuals working for Washington County Public Schools who were hired for any reason other that they are qualified to hold a needed position, has no idea how our schools are struggling to find quality employees and quite frankly, what is wrong with diversity. Encouraging, not demanding, let's get that straight. We are encouraging representation from different backgrounds. Identify and removing barriers that prevent some groups from participating. I don't know about you, but I didn't go to school with any of those children. They had a special school. We should not be eliminating this and creating a welcoming environment where peoples feel respected and included. Historically, DEI rights were not given to everyone. They are reserved for white men, much like the ones in front of me. They were not given to everybody, myself included. As a female, I experienced gender discrimination. And I'm not that old. I remember vividly 56 years ago, being on a golf course with my father and him being approached and the gentleman saying, "Sorry, Jay, your daughter can't be on the course before 10." These times and beliefs should be left in the past. Discrimination, inequity, and exclusion have no rights in our school system. Dr. Zentmeyer, you spoke lovingly of the 10 programs that you witnessed at Rockland Woods. Those programs didn't exist when any of us went to school. Those programs are in place because of DEI. Those of you who want to eliminate the position, are you doing it for the right reason? And if so, are you going to take responsibility for providing the paperwork that states that this is happening, that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted? Are you going to do that or expect a teacher or some other employee to do and fill your agenda? Are you doing this for the right reason or are you doing it to get likes on Facebook from your constituents? What we need to discuss at this meeting are things we can control, lack of funding, staffing shortages, and how to eliminate the us and them between the community and the board and the schools and CES. We need to learn, we eliminate and learn to work as one for the benefit of our children. The need of all of our children needs to come before anyone's political agenda. Thank you.
I can get situated here. Good afternoon, Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Solvine, and members of the board. I am Carol Mauin, President of the Washington County Teachers Association. Yesterday, I traveled to Annapolis with members of the Maryland State Education Association for the Western Maryland MSEA Lobby Day. While there, I learned more about the Proposed Excellence in Maryland Public Schools Act, which is linked to the K-12 Funding Plan Governor Westmore has included in his proposed FY '26 budget. The complex bill includes a range of program areas such as expansion of Grow Your Own Funding and Collaborative Time Pilot Program Grants, as well as delays and reductions to some parts of the blueprint, with some of the resources reallocated to bolster the education pipeline needed to achieve blueprint goals and end pervasive educator shortages. I also learned that the blueprint is not responsible for the state budget crisis this year. One of the primary factors is actually rising Medicaid costs. As I shared with you at January's meeting, I am concerned about the pause in the rollout of the collaborative planning time for teachers. We need more planning time in the school day. We needed more time in the school day before blueprint. The increased expectations for MTSS plans and small group instruction, as well as the increase in job-embedded professional learning, without the increased time in the school day to do the work is not sustainable for our teachers, especially at the elementary level. Last week, I attended a two-day training session sponsored by the Maryland State Department of Education and the Maryland State Education Association on community schools. WCPS also sent a team from ER Hicks there to participate with other school teams from across the state. We heard from the community schools team from the Anaheim Union High School District in California. It was inspirational and aspirational for those who attended. I learned that collaborative leadership and shared responsibility is key to the success of community schools. Structures recommended include a district-wide steering committee and a board policy related to community schools. I hope that through a shared partnership with WCTA, we can see the kinds of benefits from community schools that the presenters from Anaheim, California, shared with us. Since December's meeting, those of you who are new to the Board of Ed have had the opportunity to be introduced to the complexities of the budget process and the daily operations of our school system. I urge you to consider multiple perspectives and competing priorities with open minds as you make decisions that impact our students. I also urge you to reconsider the change in timing for the Board of Education's monthly business sessions from 6:00 PM to 4:00 PM. This change in time makes it difficult and in some cases impossible for teachers, parents, and citizens to attend in person or to watch meetings live. Further, the placement of public comment at the end of the meeting rather than the beginning makes it impossible for citizens to comment on items that the board will discuss during the meeting in a manner that could impact the board's discussions during the meeting and prior to votes. Towards the end of a recent work session regarding the FY '26 proposed budget, Dr. Solvine shared comments about brainstorming ways to strengthen the salary pool for WCPS staff in the budget process this year. I hope that additional funding can be identified. The 2% in the salary pool is just not enough. Staff have not received adequate cost of living increases and our salaries are not keeping up with the rate of inflation. This year, you can do something different. I urge you to work with Dr. Solvine to develop a strategy that will result in a new partnership with the county moving forward and to creatively solve the allocation of available funds so that the school system's employees can be paid at a competitive and appropriate level. I went so fast because I was afraid I was going to run out of time and here I have a whole minute left. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Can you hear me? Thank you all. I am here, my name's Michelle, and again, I am speaking to you today because I am part of the Warrior legacy from Boonsborough High School. There are three generations of my family that are Boonsborough High School graduates. My dad and my uncle in '68 and '69, my sister and I in '88 and '89, and my youngest daughter is on pace to graduate next year, 2026. She's also was on the Boonsborough State Championship volleyball team and she is a thrower for the track and field team and has been for all three years so far. When I use the term legacy, I am referring specifically to Coach Dwight Scott and how he has influenced and inspired our lives. Coach Scott invested 52 of his 87 years of his life to Boonsborough and our community and our athletes and families. 52 of 87. Just want to make sure I make that point. Coach Scott started his career at Boonsborough High School in 1959, bringing football, and the very next year, in 1960, he brought track and field to Washington County. He was a teacher, a coach, athletic director from 1959 until 1996 when he retired. But he wasn't done. He volunteered for the next 15 years as a cross-country and track and field coach. His investment in our community was intentional. He taught us how to be well-prepared, how to work hard, make personal and team goals, and how to work together. He taught us how to make a commitment and never give up on ourselves. He led by example. He was a student of learning and teaching every athlete how to improve. Every athlete was important. It didn't matter if you were the county and the state champion or you were the last runner representing the team coming across the finish line. He was well-respected all over Washington County and the entire state of Maryland and beyond. He gave everything he had to everyone he met. He taught us to have self-respect and how to finish strong. And that's why I'm really in front of you today, is because I'm a Warrior mom. My understanding is that in Coach Scott's last seven years of his life, he was creating this strategic plan in how to improve the Boonsborough High School athletic campus. I am here to support Coach Scott's I am here to support Coach Scott's plans and improve the facilities. These plans have been in development for several years now, and my understanding is they've kind of hit a roadblock with the Board of Ed. These plans are needed to improve the area and the outdoor location of our sports. I firmly believe that every athlete in Washington County deserves to have a safe place to practice and to compete. And I think you probably do, too. Our Boonsboro athletes, all of them, need to be safe. And the community that supports us, our family and friends that attend the games and practices, they need a safe place to be. We need safe areas for the community. That includes, in the plan that was presented, safe parking and bathroom facilities, which include handicap accessible. We have parents and grandparents that need that when they attend to support our players. So that's really what I'm asking, is that we need your support and your attention, and I'm encouraging you to join our team, join our Warrior family, and support these athletes and Coach Scott's plan, so we can all finish strong to support our athletes. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Nichols.
Super. Hi. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Sovine, and Board members for allowing a public forum period here. And, ooh, this is a lot. I'm Rachel Nichols. I'm here as a citizen of Washington County and also the city of Hagerstown, as a Board member of the Hagerstown Area Religious Council, Hark, from whom you've heard already, and as a believer that we are all made b'tselem Elohim in the image of God. That's Hebrew for "the image of God," and we are equally deserving of all this wonderful life has to offer. In particular, I would like to see the Board reconsider the removal of the Supervisor of Equity and Excellence from next year's budget. In general, this is a plea for you to keep in mind that this school board is purposely elected on a nonpartisan basis. Mr. Burkett, you said that all employees are supposed to be following the laws and that we already have these laws and policies in place. I'm sorry to have to say, we are not yet at nirvana, and we still need some guardrails, I'm sorry to say. We are, it cannot be denied, living in a highly emotional, politically-charged climate. But I'm frankly feeling that many of you have been captured by the latest partisan, jingoistic, rallying cries of "DEI is bad and a waste of money." I know some of you personally, and some of you I only have gotten to know a little bit through your social media presence, but I believe overall that you are not of the ilk who would normally condone a slash-and-burn-and-we'll-figure-it-out-later mentality just because that's a particular party's crying, rallying cry at any given moment. Slow down. Keep talking with the Washington County Public School employees, our true gems, and discover the actual, the real stress points and the real waste. My personal opinion, this county works miracles serving a diverse community with an extremely limited budget. Employees should not have to live in fear that their jobs are going to be held at the whim of partisan politics. In Hark's letter to you that was sent earlier, we acknowledge that showing success and effectiveness of this one particular employee and any employees that are also affected and consequent-related programs is not easy, and especially when there's only been a relatively short period of time in which to show proof of concept. I hope you are listening with open hearts. Others today have spoken beautifully about what leaning into those words, they're real words, they're not just a three-letter word. Leaning into the diversity, leaning into equity, leaning into inclusion, what it really means, and it's my hope that if you maybe find yourself wearing one, you will cast off the cloak of preconception. I hope you understand that you are also role models for our students. Please show them how to work cooperatively with those who are different and with those who differ with you. And thank you again for this opportunity. I hope this won't be the last time we meet.
Thank you. Grace Hollingsworth.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Zentmeyer, Dr. Sovine, and members of the Board. My name is Grace Hollingsworth, a senior from North Hagerstown High School and a part of the International Baccalaureate Program. When I first walked through the doors of North High, I was eager to learn, grow, and find my place. Over the years, I've had the privilege in taking on leadership skills that will help me, that will allow me to advocate for my peers and work towards a positive change in our school community. Through these experiences, I have learned the importance of using my voice to address concerns that affect students' daily lives. That is why I'm here today, to bring attention to an issue that, while often overlooked, has a real impact on students: the condition and accessibility of our school bathrooms. For many students, using the restroom during the school day has become a challenge. With multiple bathrooms locked, students will often have to walk across the building just to find one that's open. What should be a quick break from class turns into a lost instructional time as students search for available restroom. This is not only disrupts their learning, but can also cause stress and frustration. I understand administrators have been making the decision to lock certain bathrooms in efforts to prevent vaping and other misconduct. I recognize the need to maintain a safe and healthy school environment, and I appreciate the steps being taken to address these concerns. However, locking bathrooms does not eliminate the problem, it simply relocates it, while also creating new challenges for students who genuinely need to use the restroom. Instead of preventing disruptions, this approach often causes them, as students are forced, to spend valuable class time searching for an open restroom. Even when students do find an available bathroom, they frequently encounter another issue: stalls without functioning locks. This forces them to either wait for another stall, further extending their time away from class, or use a stall without privacy. No student should have to feel uncomfortable while trying to meet a basic need. I know, as a senior, I may not see, personally see, the changes I am advocating for today. However, I am not speaking for myself. I'm speaking for the students who will walk in these halls next year and the years after. They deserve to attend a school where they do not have to go through the same unnecessary struggles I and so many other students have faced. I share these concerns not to place blame, but because I truly believe that addressing them will make a meaningful difference in students' daily lives. By ensuring that more restrooms remain open and that stalls' locks are properly maintained, we could create a environment where students feel comfortable, safe, and able to focus on their education without unnecessary distractions. I appreciate the work that goes into maintaining our schools, and I know that improvements like these take time and effort. I simply ask that this issue be considered a priority as it directly affects students' well-being and academic success. Thank you for your time and commitment to making our schools the best that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Shred, thank you. And I know you.
Good evening, President Williams. Good evening, Dr. Sovine and members of the Board. Like you said, my name is Shraddha Bista, and I am a senior at North Hagerstown High School. This evening, I want to take a moment to share my opinion on conversations I've heard in this building, on this dais, and public comment I've heard from other community members. WCPS is and should always be a place of inclusivity for all of our students, including but not limited to our students of color, our students with disabilities, and our LGBTQIA+ students. We are in, excuse me, we are in unprecedented times, I understand that, and as a board, you guys face a plethora of issues every single day. And I thank you for the work that you put into making our school systems a better place for all of our students. At the same time, I ask you to put the best interest of these students at the forefront of every single decision that you make on this dais and when you are in our communities. As a student, I am beyond grateful for my education and time here in WCPS. From kindergarten to my senior year of high school, I have had the best teachers, the most caring administrations, and an education that has challenged and supported me. There is no doubt in my mind that WCPS and this board care for the students of Washington County. It is clear in the meetings I have watched from this board and past boards, it is clear in the programs that we have here in WCPS, and it is clear in the way that CES has adapted during hard times. I ask you to continue to adapt, to continue to be flexible, and be supportive during the future. Future students deserve the same inclusive environments in their schools and in their classrooms that I have been granted, and they deserve teachers, faculty, and a board that supports each and every single student in this county. I want to also take a moment to thank Dr. Sovine for visiting North High a few weeks ago and reassuring students that citizenship is not a barrier of entry for our classrooms and for our students, and that WCPS will continue to support each student regardless of citizenship status. I hope that I can see that level of care and alliance given to every single community within Washington County now and 10 years from now. As I leave Washington County and go into college, I am happy to have resided in this county my whole life and studied with the WCPS for the past 13 years. And at the same time, I hope students can continue to say that they are happy to be in this county and that they are grateful for the education that they have been granted here. And that reality, a reality where students feel included and comfortable in their education and in their classrooms, comes from the decisions that you guys on this board and on this dais make. Your words here and your votes here have power, and your words of encouragement and inclusivity can start a ripple effect in this whole county. So, when you are challenged with federal decisions and exclusive community members, I plead with you, I beg of you, to think about our low-income students, our students from one-family households, our trans students, our disabled students, our students of color, our queer students, and students from other marginalized communities, and make a decision that works for every single student in Washington County. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Emily Agresto.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Sovine. My name is Emily Agresto, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about chronic absenteeism in schools. I'm not speaking out to shame children or parents, but rather out of a place of concern, something not many people know about me, including my closest friends sitting to either side of me. They don't know that I struggle with chronic absenteeism, or I did for years. And so my comment comes from a vulnerable place. I know chronic absenteeism is an issue. According to the Department of Education, in the 2015-2016 school year, 7.3 million children were considered chronically absent, out of the 50.33 million children in the study. After the pandemic, that number has doubled. I know firsthand that this has long-term effects. I can tell by looking at my own GPA. Yet, I remain very literate and thankful that I stay in school, but my struggle doesn't end magically. Every time I walk in my high school, my mind plays flashbacks of why I don't want to be there. Now, I try to show up every day and get my education. In my case, I suffer and continue to suffer with chronic depression and anxiety, which is extremely common amongst adolescents. But it affects each of us differently. But I know my experience is not cookie cutter, and many don't willingly choose to be absent. Being absent on purpose is caused by other things, such as mental, other mental health issues, socioeconomic issues, violence in schools, bullying, transportation issues, family issues, and so many more. But why would we punish a parent and child? Because it's the law. Truancy is a very real fear. But maybe the Board should start thinking outside the box and help allocate money to putting boots on the ground and finding out why children have such a hard time being in a classroom at the moment. Targeted approaches need to be accomplished to meet student needs. By trying to disassemble the ABLE program, this thoroughly hurts children who have a hard time learning in a crowded classroom. When we provide therapy to children with connections like Brook Lane, this gives a chance for students to improve their mental health. Maybe it's that a student's administration in their school won't take their bullying issue seriously. This is all reasons why children can become chronically absent. Or even circling back to children who have family issues, they might think that they have to protect their household, which definitely is not their responsibility. This might just be a reflection and a wake-up call that positive and healthy learning conditions have been eroding for years, and nothing will put this issue at a screeching halt like we need on this map, I'm sorry. And nothing will put this issue at a screeching halt. That's why we need to be on this fast-moving train. This includes talking to parents. More parents are unaware of how these chronic absenteeism patterns form. Even if it's the law, it's the law. We do, why do we punish children that are struggling? Did you know that in my school handbook, after five tardies being late to school, you're supposed to receive a lunch detention? I don't know how many detentions I would have had in the past couple of years, but it would be a lot. That seems like a wonderful incentive to make children want to come to school. But we need to advocate at the state level, too. What I've seen in Connecticut, they've allocated $10.7 million to develop a home visit program that has helped over 8,600 students. After building the connections and finding solutions, Connecticut is seeing less absentees. Belonging, connection, and support is all I'm asking for. Teachers and students and parents alike need you guys to invest in our education, more than just our schooling. Our health and our mental health matters. The Board needs to meet students and families where we're at. Also concluding, I would like to state that the change in time of Board of Education meetings makes it extremely inaccessible to students. If you even started the meeting an hour later, all students would be able to make it to the meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Toreen Master of Ceremonies Malat.
We're sharing the same computer, so. Okay. Good evening, President Zentmeyer, Superintendent Sovine, student member, and other members of the Board. I'm Toreen Malat, a current sophomore at Barbara Ingram School for the Arts and a member of the Board of Student Leaders for Washington County's Association of Student Councils. I also service the co-chair of the Hagerstown Youth Council, the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Student Government Association Secretary, as well as being a state-certified workshop presenter through Maryland's Association of Student Councils. Before I express my thoughts, I just want to be clear that the following statement is in no regard nor intent to slander any individual nor discredit the constant work this Board and so many other behind-the-scenes individuals do. I speak here tonight in hopes to bring further attention towards previous shared concerns, to provide potential solutions that would make progress in building a stronger, more inclusive community, and to address the poor actions WCPS plans to take. In many instances, I appreciate the work that the Board of Education does and the general operations in which WCPS performs. However, when it comes to discrimination in our schools, I am beyond dissatisfied, frustrated, and even hurt. In my previous public comment, I spoke on the poor practices WCPS possesses in reference to their bullying and harassment policy. I preached my own personal experiences and provided another perspective on the results of the decisions you all make. I sought for WCPS to take a clear stance on inclusion and to make greater strides in fostering a sense of belonging throughout the district. Just to name a few ways WCPS could make progress include instilling this in our school curriculum by providing further context on discrimination even in the 21st century, even offering additional classes, understanding microaggressions, providing further training for faculty on implicit and subconscious bias, creating posters about discrimination and hate crimes that could be distributed throughout the district, similar to the usage of AI and self-impolicy signs, or... signs, or even allowing for the Office of Equity and Excellence to make visits and present at school assemblies to educate students on equity versus equality, hate crimes, microaggressions, bias, celebrating diversity, and fostering inclusivity. These are only a few draft solutions. As someone who has been enrolled in WCPS since the very beginning, I find it crucial that we take further actions and steps in building a district that would make all students and faculty feel comfortable, no matter their background or identity, in which encompasses race, ethnicity, national origin, gender identity, sexual orientation, social status, housing status, citizenship status, et cetera. After referencing Superintendent Sovine's latest FY26 draft budget, in which reads "To Invest in Blueprint, Studic Success, Culture, Safety, and Wellness, Access and Opportunity, and Community Engagement," I am appalled at certain aspects of the anticipated upcoming budget. The second item in which is a proposed budget cut is the Supervisor of Equity and Excellence. If school safety and student support is of the highest priority and at the forefront of all decisions made, why would we decide to remove a department that works in ensuring educational equity, a climate that supports every student's success, a more equitable academic program, and that strives to recruit and retain effective and diverse educators and staff? The general goal is to improve learning experiences for every child by providing tailored and differentiated professional development with an equity focus for all teachers and staff, as stated by the Office of Equity and Excellence at the last Board of Education meeting the department spoke at on June 1st of 2021. The overarching initiative of the Department of Equity and Excellence is to make further progress towards school safety, student support, culture, safety, and wellness, and verifying that the playing field of access to opportunities that WCPS provides is even across the board. So instead of cutting this from WCPS policy in an attempt to round off more money to reallocate towards other initiatives, I encourage everyone to take a step back, to reevaluate, and reassess the purpose, mission, and vision of this department. Redirect the actions WCPS is taking as the Office of Equity and Excellence aligns directly with the previously stated priorities of Superintendent Sovine and MSDE Blueprint. In terms of comprehension of the budget, I'm well aware of the fact that WCPS has an ever-growing community of students, which requires further spending on school construction, maintenance of schools, resources provided to students, such as Chromebooks, faculty salaries, and other expenses. However, WCPS is spending roughly $43 million on a new elementary school, when we already have 25, yet in comparison to the number of middle schools, we have seven, and in relation to the number of high schools, we have nine. By no means am I discrediting the need for a new elementary school. I understand that that is a priority of the Board of Education and something necessary to build. Although what I am saying is that if strict budget cuts are absolutely necessary, then we must remove, that we must remove the main initiative WCPS takes in providing an equitable education system, I highly suggest we reevaluate our priorities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Torm. Jessica Ramos. Is that right?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jessica, and I'm a sophomore from South Hagerstown High School. Today, I want to bring attention to a concern that affects many students, the condition of our school bathrooms. First, I want to acknowledge the hard work of our custodians, who do their best to maintain our schools. My concern is not about their efforts or to degrade them, but rather about the issue of how bathrooms are maintained and managed throughout the school day. From my personal experience, this issue has been present since middle school, and I know a few other students across the district who share a similar concern. At my school, there are rules in place to manage bathroom usage, such as prohibiting a pass made in the first and last 10 minutes of class to avoid disruptions. While these rules may have been designed to prevent students from gathering in restrooms, they have not completely solved the issue of keeping bathrooms clean and accessible. Restricting access to using the bathroom at times has made it worse. There have been multiple days when more than one bathroom was closed in different hallways, forcing students to walk farther just to find an open bathroom. Situations like these are inconvenient and would make some students hesitate to use the restroom when needed. I believe a few possible solutions could be ensuring multiple bathrooms remain open throughout the day, implementing more frequent cleaning, and assigning staff to help monitor bathroom locations that tend to get crowded. These steps can help maintain a clean, healthy school environment where students feel comfortable, and having a clean, accessible bathroom plays a role in that. I urge the board to take this concern into consideration and find ways to improve restroom conditions for all students to have access to clean restrooms throughout the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, help me out. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Presidents Zentmeyer, Superintendent Sovine, student member, and other members of the board. My name is Ben Ladensberger, a freshman at Boonsborough High School and a current member of the Board of Student Leaders for Washington County Association of Student Councils. I would like to talk to you about substance abuse among students and what we can do to better help them. Rehabilitation programs, including counseling and therapy, are more effective than punitive measures in reducing substance use amongst adolescents. A study in the Journal of Substance Abuse Treatment found lower substance use rates in adolescents who participated in comprehensive rehabilitation programs compared to those who did not. Rehabilitation programs often also address underlying mental health issues that contribute to substance use. A study by the American Journal of Public Health found that adolescents who received mental health treatment had better outcomes in terms of substance use and overall well-being. I chose this topic because substance abuse is a pervasive issue in our schools, and addressing it is crucial to ensuring our students remain healthy. What stands out to me is that according to Merewood Teen Treatment, 71% of teenage clients who completed a drug rehabilitation program showed significant improvement in their substance use. It is imperative that we continue to invest in rehabilitation programs to ensure the mental health and well-being of our students. Drug rehabilitation programs are important to me as a student because it is hard seeing someone you know struggle with substance abuse. By taking action, we can help students to thrive and pursue their education. On a personal note, I have witnessed several instances of substance use among peers, such as vaping. I urge the board to consider implementing a peer concern form at the school, which would allow students to confidently report concerns and help their peers receive the necessary support and intervention. Thank you for your time and service to the citizens of Washington County, the employees of Washington County Public Schools, and the students of our communities.
Thank you. Is our cell? Okay, help me out here. Thank you.
Good evening, Presidents Zentmeyer, Dr. Sovine, student member, and other distinguished members of the board. My name is Ruby, and I am currently enrolled at North Hagerstown High School. First, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude for all members, for your dedications and efforts towards Washington County Public Schools, and that I hold no intentions to denounce any members or actions of the board. My purpose here today is to elaborate on the crucial need to address student mental health concerns. According to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children and adolescents experience mental health problems during their school years. And furthermore, the 2023 Washington County Health Department report presents that, on average, 28.5% of students often experience bad mental health. Schools can significantly impact the mental well-being of students, contributing to issues such as academic stress, social pressure, and feelings of isolation. Schools should be accountable for creating a healthy and positive environment for students, recognizing the substantial amount of time they spend within school premises. During my middle school years, I had a close friend of mine struggling with depression. She frequently cried in class. Her academic performances declined, and she lost passion for her favorite activities. As a friend, it was heartbreaking to have witnessed her go through this. During this, I noticed apathy from teachers. Despite the importance of academic pursuits, mental health still remains a top priority. Teachers should be trained to be able to identify signs of mental health issues in their students and find or provide appropriate support. Schools should foster a climate of safety and positivity, enabling students to feel secure and confident in seeking support from counselors or other trusted adults when needed. The ultimate goal of education is not only for knowledge, but to learn, to accept, and appreciate who we are and the world around us. And that will not happen unless we are able to enjoy the presence. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that will? Come on up.
I called last week, and they signed me up, so I thought I would say this.
Well, you're here now.
Hello, hi. I have a totally different topic from anybody else tonight, so thank you all for listening to me, President Dr. Zentmeyer, and Dr. Sovine, and distinguished board members. My name is Karen Dunn Swafford, and I am part of the group Save Locomotive 202. I am a 2003 graduate of Williamsport High School. I went to Fountain Rock Elementary School and Springfield Middle School, and I graduated one year early from Williamsport High School to procure my Bachelor of Fine Arts degree from George Mason University in Fairfax, Virginia. Graduating from GMU in 2007, I went on to work for nonprofit organizations, corporate companies, and family-owned businesses. But today, I'm not here to talk about how Washington County Public School Systems melded me into the person that I am today. I'm here on a more personal level. You see, my two sons, two and a half and three and a half years old, they love trains. Everything is trains, toys, shows, clothes, it's trains. Part of that includes visiting the 112-year-old steam engine Locomotive 202 that's located at the Hagerstown City Park. It is towards the back left of the park, next to the baseball fields, and it is in a fenced-in Train Hub Museum area. It's only open Fridays and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., April through October. It's also open for several city-sponsored events, including an upcoming event called Touch a Train and Touch a Truck. Really fun if you've never been to one. They have the ambulances, the fire cars, the police cars, and kids can get in and out of them and do all sorts of stuff. It's really fun. But anyway, seeing the amount of children that get to experience the Locomotive 202 train there inspires me to bring it to the forefront of conversation tonight. Locomotive 202 is a last-of-its-kind mainline passenger steam engine that actually ran passengers from Hagerstown to Baltimore back in the early 1900s. It was built in 1912 and was retired in 1953. When it was retired, it was dedicated by the Western Maryland, or Western Maryland Railway to the children of Hagerstown. Locomotive 202 is truly a unique experience. It is truly a unique experience. There are stairs that lead up to the cabin, where children and parents can explore the gauges and valves, and can even ring the bell. It's a wonderful time that my boys and I often enjoy. The thought that future generations of children and their parents might not be able to enjoy the locomotive does not sit well with me. As some of you may know, in September of 2024, the city of Hagerstown received an offer to trade the historical locomotive for a more modern diesel-engine locomotive to be put on display in its place. That means an irreplaceable piece of railroad history is in danger of being relocated outside of Washington County. We bring this information to your attention in hopes of your support to keep Locomotive 202 in, sorry, Hagerstown, Maryland, through education and awareness. When I found out the train may be leaving Hagerstown, I spoke up at the October City Council meeting. I subsequently have been met with support and opposition. As supporters of keeping Locomotive 202, local citizens have joined together and formed a group, Save Locomotive 202. We have provided the city of Hagerstown an offer to become a nonprofit organization to help alleviate some of the burden that Locomotive 202 brings to the city. With that, we are going to continue with our plan to create that nonprofit organization. With that said, we want to go ahead and jump-start our relationship with Washington County Public School Systems. Locomotive 202 is a perfect example of bringing history to life. We extend the offer to partner with you, the parents and educators, to provide examples of interactive educational experiences and focused assignments for students to learn and study the historical steam engine in real time. In the future, we would like to actively engage with Washington County Public Schools and create relevant educational programs related to railroad heritage in Washington County. We are developing innovative techniques to incorporate hands-on activities, demonstrations, and inquiry learning opportunities. I'm so sorry. Our nonprofit will ensure programs are suitable and accessible for students of all learning needs and abilities. Age-appropriate sensory content, like coloring pages for elementary school, the science of steam engines for middle schools, and opinion essays for high schoolers. We already partner with the Hagerstown Roundhouse Museum and can provide onsite interactive experiences to you immediately. We are also able to extend an offer to Washington County Public Schools Best Buddies Program for those onsite activities as a start. Our long-term goal is to work with the city and restore Locomotive 202, but short-term, we would like to form a relationship with Washington County Public School Systems to expand and strengthen the public's knowledge of Hagerstown's rich railroad history. Sorry, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Oh, I had to really try and make that through that. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Save Locomotive 202.
Anybody else that's not signed up who wants to talk? If you could sign in for the minutes.
Certainly.
And then introduce yourself.
They have really tiny boxes.
For sure.
All right. Well, my name is Kayden Fostina O'Neil. I'm a Washington County resident. I actually live in downtown Hagerstown. I wasn't really planning on talking to you tonight, but our good pastor back here's speech brought to mind some things that have been on my heart that would be relevant to our discussion, especially, obviously, on our discussion of DEI. I've fallen in love with Hagerstown. I'm fairly new here, but I fell in love with a diverse city, you know, a city where I'm next to immigrants, I'm next to people of color, I'm next to all sorts of people that aren't like me, and our children are the important part of that to us. And I'm concerned that the way this board is going, the way so many of our policies are going, we're setting that aside. We're setting part of our neighbors, part of our county aside because they're not, because they don't look the right way, because they don't believe the right way, because they're not the right sexuality or orientation, anything like that. And, well, to get right to the point, all I'm going to say is, when you're making your decisions for our board, we're asking you, please consider asking yourself, who is my neighbor here? Who is my neighbor, and how am I showing my care for them? Because I want to see all of our children in this county be something that we show care for. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, everybody. My name is Lori Beturin, and I'm here to talk about a lot of different things because I've been really moved by these kids. They're amazing. You have overwhelmed me tonight. I circulated a petition around Facebook to set the board meetings back to the time they were before. I received 355 signatures. Now, if I were to take those 355 signatures that come here to you today with a rabbit sitting next to me and say, "I represent them, I get five minutes for each person," we would be sitting here for 29 and a half hours. I don't understand why some community members are treated differently than other community members. Mr. Gessford, I'm sorry you're not here tonight, but you told this other person at the last meeting, he could take as much time as he wanted. And he claimed to be representing the gentleman who owns the candy store in the mall, which is open until 9 o'clock. So he got double time or something along those lines. Well, what about your teachers? What about your students who can't get here in time for a 4:00 meeting? Don't you represent them? They can't get here. I had to rush out of the house tonight with an elementary school student to get here at 4:00, praying the babysitter would be on time from high school. You gotta listen to what your people need, and I don't think you are. Then we move on to diversity, equity, and inclusion. How could we even make a statement about it tonight that you might listen to if our statements are coming at the end of the meeting? Not that we're really being heard by everybody. Linda, I love what you had to say. Thank you. I have a son who graduated from Marshall Street. Marshall Street Job Development Program. Are you going to exclude now your job development program students from working in your schools because they're special needs? Is that going to happen? At some point, you have to show us, your parents, your students, that you hear us. And if we're speaking at the end- And if we're speaking at the end of the meeting, you've got to come back to us with some kind of a change in the way you're thinking and prove to us that you're hearing us, because I'm not sure that you are. I think you're so stuck in the politics and not in your students. I think that LGBTQ, I think we're going to see a lot of behavior problems creeping up with those students, and if one of them hurts themselves because they couldn't get the counseling and the help they needed in the schools, I hold you responsible for that, because they're probably not getting it at home, especially if they're your students, if they're your kids, because they can't talk. There's so much anger and so much hostility, and where's that kid going to go? They can't talk to their parents. Who else can they talk to? It's the thing with the books, the banned books. Everybody wants to ban the books, but they give their kid a cellphone. If you don't want your kid reading the book, don't tell them not to check it out of the library, but then you hand them a cellphone, which has everything in the world right on it. It all just doesn't make any sense. So I'm not going to take my 29 and a half hours tonight. I might not even take my five minutes. I'm going to put them on the back burner. Let's put our kids first. Please, 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 put the students first. I know it's not your job to parent, but some of the kids don't go home to parents, parents who are doing them right. And we've got to pick up the slack, because if we don't, they're in trouble, and we want them all to be like this when they come into high school. Thank you.
Could you? Thanks. I appreciate that. Ethan?
Oh, you want to tie one?
Ethan, you can come on up.
Ethan, I have information for you that will show you that the schools are not transitioning students.
You could sit in one of the other ones to get started, Ethan.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Lowen, and so many of the issues discussed tonight, from the condition of the sports field to the memorial statue, locked bathroom doors, DEI, all revolves, I think, around the same one topic, and it shows up in the budget. You know, two years ago, there was a presentation that was done about the blueprint, which is really the increase in public school spending, even though it has very little to do with education. And at that time, two years ago, before it was instituted, I said, you know, this is going to not just increase the size of the public school budget, it's going to increase the size of government. Like, it's that tremendously huge. Twelve months ago, the governor put forth, you know, a bill with, the first bill with blueprint implemented, and it showed that there was going to be suddenly a perpetual budget deficit. And by 2029, four years from now, there is going to be a 4% deficit. And then this year, just literally a couple months ago, when the budget was announced for this year, the governor announced, we are now in a crisis, and we are going from a 4% deficit four years from now to a 16% deficit five years from now. And that is a crisis, because that's actually, it's beyond a crisis. It's actual instability. It's societal instability is what a 16% government deficit actually means. And the cause of it is the blueprint, because the blueprint is increasing spending by $3.8 billion a year, and our budget this year is $63 billion. So that's a 6% increase just for blueprint. That's not even for teaching, reading, writing, math, science, history. That's just for all the additional things that blueprint does outside of that. And so what ends up happening is that you can't increase a budget by 6%, but you have to increase it more than that. What about the cost of roads maintenance and paramedics and keeping the utility poles on? And so what happens is that now that we are at this point, what it really shows is that where the limit is. The emperor has no clothes. So much of what has been stated, quite frankly, isn't affordable, because it's a fairy tale. That's what a 16% budget deficit is. It's a fairy tale. And it has not, there are not very many government entities in America that have ever gone down this route, but there have been a few, and it's been bad. The one most similar to our state was what the city of Detroit went through, where they ended up having to file bankruptcy. They were economically about the size of our state, actually. And by the time they had to file bankruptcy because of their 16% deficits, they were selling artwork off the walls of their museums, selling off their government buildings, they had to cut their pensions by over 30%. The pensions would have been cut a lot more than 30%, but the state of Michigan stepped in and said, "We've got to limit the damage somewhat." But this is the state, so who's going to save us? Who's going to save our teachers? And so what happened is, you can see the progression of the last several years, where it was, okay, we're going to sacrifice the education, the academic performance of students in order to do all these other things. Then, okay, we're going to let the schools become unsafe in the name of, dare I say it, DEI. Everyone agrees with the slogans of DEI. Everyone, everyone in this room, I have no doubt, but it's the practical applications that are at the issue, not the slogans. And so we're going to let the schools become unsafe, and suddenly, students and now teachers are in physical danger. Well, now it's gotten to the point where the pensions are now at risk. Now, are they at imminent risk at the moment? No. You go a few years down the road, and it gets to the point where you can't dig yourself out of the hole. We are the second-most indebted state in America and the 13th-highest taxed. By 2033, because of blueprint, blueprint alone, we are going to be the number-one highest taxed state in America, tied with New York State, and we will then exceed, setting new limits every year thereafter, because after 2033, blueprint increases $4 billion automatically, fantasy. But the damage in the pursuit of the fantasy, even though it'll never be achieved, gets to the point where it can't be undone. And so what happens is that at some point, we simply have to choose to stop playing the game. We have to admit, okay, this is what the reality is. Why are there locks on the bathroom doors? It's because in the name of DEI, we won't send misbehaved kids to where they can get help, because that's not equitable. I'm not talking about the slogans, I'm talking about the practical applications, right? We have, what blueprint calls for in the name of DEI, is that if there's a Spanish-speaking child, correct me if I'm wrong, but automatically, that child gets $8,500 more per student. Now, it is easily justifiable that a non-English-speaking child can get more money.
Ethan, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Good evening, Dr. Savine and, oh, Dr. Zentmeyer, Dr. Savine, board members and student rep. I had a whole presentation here and everything, and I had all this stuff, but there were many people before me. I'm Robin Merchant Spickler. I'm a lifelong resident of Washington County, born, raised, educated through the county. My grandkids are now in the county. I cannot say any more than these young ladies and gentlemen behind me, Mrs. Day, Mr. Williams, everything I had to say, from asking you to give me my seven minutes, like Mike gave Sean, and anybody else who would want to go over that little buzzer or maybe unplug it. You know, I just am appalled at how our Board of Ed has been handling itself. We've got new members in here. You all ran on premises that you were here for our students. I haven't seen that. I know you're not fully into a full session, but there's so many things that we've become such a joke. People say, hey, have you seen that? You need to go look at the costume man, or you need to have, you know, look at this stuff and this stuff. But these people have elegantly, eloquently said what I would hope to have said. You have moved the time to a time that's very inaccessible for students. You had a young student here for the pledge at four, which most schools, I taught at Ruth A. Monroe Primary, which don't get out that early. So those parents and that student had to get here super early across town. And then you have students receiving awards that school's still in session. You have teachers who can't get here. Yes, they can watch on Facebook and all like that, but they can't be here in presence. But it's just, you need to move it back to the time. Where are you saving this 14K that you say? You had twice-a-month six o'clock meetings in the past. You've moved it to a three o'clock meeting, which, oh, excuse me, is now one o'clock, to only one six o'clock meeting where parents and the community and stakeholders can get here. So I'm just saying, I feel like some things are getting in the way of some of your all's decisions, and how can people present their issues when you've already voted on it? I applaud Mrs. Murray here for standing up for hers. I don't know where the other two were coming from and why you were against it. You are young, you're not new in the county, but you're new to the board, and I think you need to look at some of the programs and what they are. And don't lean on just one person who maybe you personally talked to, maybe they're not working out very well. But all the other programs, the BCBA program that gets attacked, has been attacked for months, and they come in here month after month to support that program. You had a line of people here on the one o'clock meeting. Those people, those teachers, had to take off time from work to be here at your one o'clock meeting, to justify their positions and what good that program is doing. You need to think, you need to hear what all these people are saying, and it doesn't seem like that you are. I just would, I've crossed off all my fingers on here, but I think sometimes, politics is getting in the way of some very personal decisions that are being made, too. And I think you really need to look at your students, your stakeholders, people who are invested in this Board of Education, teachers, parents, students, grandkids. I know you've got grandkids. You know, you need to do what's the best for this county instead of be a laughing stock. And I just was saying, oh, wait a minute, I still have time, but I would like my seven minutes, but I won't take my seven minutes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. Board member responses to public comment.
Are we going to go ahead and combine that with board member comments or just public comment?
Response to public comment.
I'll just keep mine short. For me personally, I asked for a copy of the supervisor of DEI's job description before I made my decision. I wanted to see what exactly that person did, and as I looked at that job description and I compared it to what everybody else across the county did, I didn't understand why we were paying somebody to do something that everybody across the county was already responsible for doing. And so that's why I made the decision that I made. If you sat in here tonight, you've heard from many different people about many different issues that need to be funded. And so how can we better use funds to meet all those different needs that everybody brings up, whether it's bathrooms, whether it's mental health? Mental health is a real issue. DEI is not going to fix mental health issues. So for me, just so you know, those who don't think that it was looked at, I did ask for a copy of that job description. People are saying, you're not hearing us. You know what? I was here with the last board, and I kind of felt like at times, people weren't hearing me, but I was still able to express myself. And so I do appreciate everybody that came in and expressed their opinions, their thoughts, and their ideas, but there's only limited funds, and it's going to get worse. And so I think all of us that are sitting up here are just trying to do the best that we can. You know, working in ministry, there's a pastor here tonight, fellow pastor, and, you know, when we talk about bringing scripture into public office or facility, it's frowned upon. But I would like to think that I care about every single person that's in this room. I believe in forgiveness. I believe in taking care of my fellow brother and sister. Voting to remove a DEI position does not mean I'm a hater, doesn't mean any of us up here are haters. We still love every individual, as I'm sure every principal, every teacher, and every other student in this county does. Sure, there's problems with bullying. Is that a DEI issue or is that a behavior issue? I do foster care, so I'm well aware that some students go home to bad homes. Is it the school's responsibility to fix that? Can we fix that? Can we help? We can help, but we can't fix it. The school board cannot fix everything, but some hard decisions do need to be made. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone who came out tonight, who shared their stories, shared their fervor. I hear you guys and know that everything that has been said tonight is not being taken lightly, and I really appreciate that you guys have taken the time, even with the schedule change, to come out here tonight and speak your mind.
I actually happen to agree with the pushback on the time change. I personally would like to see it moved back so that we are able to hear from our constituents no matter what side of the aisle anybody is on. I think it's our job to listen to what everyone has to say, and I do see that it is a barrier. So that's my personal feeling about things. I do know that this is kind of a trial period, but that's my feeling.
Tori? Give me anything. Linda?
Yes. Yes. I just want to thank everybody for your comments. Everything you said was appreciated. Karen?
Yes.
I just want to tell you that I work part-time for the Hagerstown City Parks and Rec, and I have worked in the Train Hub many times. So I appreciate the 202. My son loved it, my grandkids love it. It's a great train, and hopefully, we can keep it. I just want to say one thing, and Dr. Zentmeyer, I hope you appreciate this, because I know you like history. But equity. So the Declaration of Independence of 7076 reads, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights," bleh, "that among," my mouth is so dry, "among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And that, the Constitution was ratified in June 21, 1788, but women, we're not included in any of that. Women weren't even able to own property in their names till 1900, and not able to vote until 1920. And we still struggle to have and work harder in many companies to get equal pay for equal work. So women are part of that equity. But I do want to say this: America's rich culture was made by its immigrants. If you love tacos, enchiladas, pizza, any of those things, you can thank an immigrant, and that's what makes our country great. We are a melting pot, and we learn from other cultures. That's all I have.
Yes, so I'd just like to say, as a retired mediocre athlete at best, I do fully support Boonsboro Athletics. I do disagree with some of the stuff that you guys would like to do, but I certainly appreciate your enthusiasm for it. I will say that I was against the turf field at North High, I was against the turf field at Smithsburg, I will be against the turf field at Boonsboro and all the turf fields any, after that. I could come up with just as many reasons why turf is bad, is as bad as the natural grass, so. But that doesn't mean that I'm against doing the projects. Those projects, for the most part, are very much needed, and I do hope that we can come up with an agreement that best suits the needs of not only Boonsboro Athletics, but, you know, there are other places that, there are other entities that use these fields as well. So I do hope that we could come up with an agreement, and in the meantime... And in the meantime, what I heard, and I hope that I kind of either misheard or misunderstood, was that, you know, you can't go and fundraise until we go in and approve this. And, you know, I think it definitely would make sense to go and start the fundraising. I feel confident, without speaking for the rest of my fellow board members, that, you know, there is something that needs to be done and that something will be done. So I do hope that you don't get discouraged from the fundraising. As far as mental health in schools and the bathroom situations and just the overall culture of the schools, I don't blame a kid for not wanting to go to school if they don't know if they're going to be able to feel safe just to use the restroom, you know? I don't blame you. This is something that I've been concerned about for the four years that I've been on the board. This is one of the reasons why I'm concerned about our current budget. It, to me, seems like we're just asking to do more of the same, and I think we need to look at making some significant changes, realizing that we can't do everything all at once. We can start making some significant changes. And to that effect, for culture and, you know, what other people have brought up as DEI, for me, this is a position. I didn't bring up politics. Everyone that is against what we're doing is bringing up politics. And, you know, I don't see how one person goes and changes the policy that the Board of Ed has. That's all we're doing, is removing a position and reallocating those resources, budget-wise, to places that more directly impact students. And for that, I will say that I am sorry that people think that one person goes and creates those policies and laws. That doesn't happen. I can guarantee you that, as a result of this position, if it is removed, it still hasn't been removed yet, I can guarantee you that, as a result of the removal of that position, that you will not see any change for the negative or for the better as a result of that position, which is the reason why I am voting to remove it, because, I will vote to remove it, because I don't know what the goals and responsibilities are of that position. Just like Mr. Burkett said, I knew what they were. I voted against it when it was originally brought into budget years ago. So I never saw, I've been advocating for the removal of this position and others for multiple years now. So the fact that, in my opinion, this is not a needed position is why I'm going to vote against it. There's a reason why there's seven of us, and, you know, I appreciate everyone coming up and making their voices heard, because, you know, not everyone has their minds made up. I don't necessarily have my mind made up. If someone could come and have it make sense to me why the position's needed, I'll gladly vote for it. But, you know, as of right now, nothing I heard today, you know, changes. We had people come up and talk about policies and laws. Well, this position didn't do that. There's, you know, the roles and responsibilities of this position are done by many other people. So why there's one person that does what many people are already doing doesn't make sense to me. So that's why I'm going to vote for removing that position.
We're in budget season. That means we have to look at the way we spend our money. And Tori, you might remember me saying, "You can only spend it once." At least, we can only spend it once. The United States is $36 trillion in debt. That's $952 billion of interest a year. I sit here because I care about you, and someone is selling your future. And that is the only reason that I sit here. I know that we can have differences of opinion, but we operate within the law, always first and foremost, and we have a great team that keeps us there. And now I'll try to get through the next part without crying. As a 15-year veteran of Boonsboro High School, former cheerleading coach, a warrior mom, and a friend of Dwight Scott for what seemed like ever, I can sympathize with what you're saying completely and totally. It is my hope that we come to an agreement that will benefit that community, because it was my community. And with that, we will move into, I made it, we will move into board comments. Anybody have anything?
I've kind of followed the trend tonight. I prepared a statement, so sorry that you have to sit through one more thing, but I'll try to make it quick. First, I'd like to preface the statement by saying that my comment has nothing to do with this board, previous boards, or any other individual. However, it has everything to do with the youth of our country, of our county, their safety, their futures, and their existential rights. So I want to take a moment to speak not only to recent developments in our nation and their implications on every single student, but directly to the members of our Washington County community. Under the new federal administration, the following actions have been taken against the collective advancement of the human condition: the Declaration of Strictly Two Genders, discrediting the existence of trans people, the ending of DEIA practices in federal government and other American enterprises, stifling protections against discriminatory hiring practices of the past, the mass deportation of migrants, and the repealing of the Fourteenth Amendment's guarantee to birthright citizenship. Although many of these initiatives have not been fully realized due to legal challenges in federal and state courts, their mere suggestion is indicative of the harm capable of being delivered upon the most vulnerable populations of people, populations of people that exist right here in Washington County. We have felt the ramifications of the Capitol's actions as just weeks ago, fears of ice in our schools permeated throughout the community. Students themselves were and are so greatly horrified that they did not go to school. The dread incited by this attack on the livelihoods of people who are just trying to exist is absolutely appalling, and what's even more so is that these children have to fear their schools. These children have to choose between their right to education and their right to live freely. I, myself, am the child of two immigrants who sacrificed everything they knew in search of this so-called coveted American dream. They came here with intentions not to steal people's jobs or to wreak havoc, but to work their butts off for the futures of themselves and their children. And that's what they did. For more than 20 years, they have worked 13-plus hours, 70s a week, in a stifling kitchen to support me and my siblings. They do not do so because it's luxurious or because it's easy, but because they believe in the promise of this country, the promise of freedom and the promise of success for anyone who's willing to work for it, the promise to protect the most basic of human rights regardless of where someone has come from. And this is the reality of the overwhelming majority of immigrants. They come here because they have been fed these promises, and to their dismay, are betrayed by the country that purports itself as a beacon of freedom and opportunity. My family has resided in Washington County for the entirety of my life, and without the ESL programming, the accelerated courses to specific interests, and the general support that we have received from the kind and talented people of the school system, my sister would not have graduated this past year from the University of Pennsylvania, my brother would not be graduating this year from Yale University, and I would not be currently committed to the school of my dreams. As a school system, it is non-negotiable that remains steadfast in our mission to advantage all students, no matter their color, their gender, their sexuality, their ability, their religion, their national origin, or their immigration status. We are here to provide a first-class education, and this is done by meeting every student at their level, by listening to the needs of the student population, and by trusting our educators. So in saying this, I thank all of you for your time, your attention, and your humanity. And to the community, I humbly beg of you, do not lose your compassion. Do not shield your eyes from injustice, but rather look at it head-on. Face it, reflect upon it, and then reckon with it. And then do something about it. Stay true to the founding principles of this great nation that Mr. Murray mentioned, that all men, all women, all people of all creeds, colors, of any origin are created equal. This is the land of the oppressed, this is the land of the free, this is the land of the native, this is the land of immigrants, this is the land of Americans. And it is our duty to not only uphold these tenets of our society, but to fortify them in the effort to deliver upon our people a blinding future built on love, on peace, on equality, and on unity. So thank you all for your time, and have a great evening.
Do you all have anything?
Yeah, you know, I would just say, if anybody wants to know where I stand on an issue, or would ever love to have a cup of coffee, alls you have to do is send me an email. I'd be more than happy to sit with you and talk with you. Since our last meeting, I visited the Boonsboro campus, and I met with the principals at the elementary, middle, and high school. At the elementary that day, they had a special event that I was told goes on in many of our schools. It was an event for heart health. I was able to meet with the Harrison family, Shawn and Caitlin and their children's son, Logan, and daughter, Bree, who attend there at the Boonsboro schools. Bree herself is dealing with a heart condition, and so I spoke with them a little bit, and I hope that program is, maybe gets expanded. I also was able to meet with Sheila Evers, the executive director of the Education Foundation of Washington County Public Schools. I encouraged her to come back before the board to share a little bit about what they do, and specifically, especially for new board members, so that they're aware of what this organization does. This organization has been instrumental in bringing funds into the school system that we may not have received otherwise, and maybe we can help promote their program to further their ability to bring monies into the school system. That's all for me.
Dawn for the, okay. Oh, good. I was just going to suggest you. I went to Salem Avenue today and visited my friend Craig Iker's classroom. His students were so welcoming. They showed me the different fish in their aquarium, they let me play a word game with them. I had a great time. I love it. And tomorrow, I get to visit Marshall Street School, so I'm having a great time. That's all.
I got nothing.
Okay. When I was in the classroom, civility, safe and civil schools were our goal, and it still is. Contact. Even the old-fashioned way, in cursive. Those people around you, holding doors, allowing others to go first, and giving people your undivided attention, undergird the fact that listening is more than waiting for your turn to talk. Every voice needs to be valued, and perhaps that's the central part of DEI. Saying, "Excuse me," and including others, no one likes to be left out socially, finished up what we, as a faculty, actually at Boonsboro, tried to model. In my visit to Pangborn recently, I was amazed and astounded at the pre-K students who are now readers, and the entire school lined up to celebrate them. It's clear that civility and safe schools is paramount to doing what we do. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. We can't do what we do without your input. And thank you to all of the people in our schools who get up every morning, put the cape on. They're my real heroes. They teach our students well. Thank you so much for coming. Have a great and safe trip home. This meeting is adjourned.